The hour has arrived. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to welcome you to the April 23rd meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. First order of business, the flag's boy.
My allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our honored guests today. We have Troop 513 here from the Boy Scouts. We're not sure if that's to add dignity, truth, or to teach us how to pitch tents in case sand mining comes back up again for a long meeting. But thank you guys for showing up tonight. Next item of business is approval of the minutes on the April 9th meeting. Or approval or disapproval, or minutes and addendums, or whatever. Thank you. Thank you, P R. Anybody?
Second.
Greg, second. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item three is items not on consent. The first item is Riden Tower, FL 1260, request for administrative permit use approval to construct a stealth wireless communications tower down in South County. You doing it? Oh, I'm sorry. Whoever's going to do it, point. John, are you doing it? Okay. But before that, it is quasi-judicial, as is both items, which is Harbor Point. So anyone who's going to speak to either the Riden Tower or Harbor Point, if you would stand to be sworn, I would appreciate it. These are both quasi-judicial. If you're going to speak, you need to be sworn in. Go ahead.
Do you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. The proctor in the back reminding me of these things. Okay, John, take off.
Good evening, Commission.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hamner.
Fire away.
John McCoy, Senior Planner at the Planning Staff. And this is a request for administrative permit use for a stealth tower by Riden Industries. The site is located -- excuse me. The project description is 120-foot wireless stealth tower to appear as a power pole, so it should mimic the appearance of a power pole. It's designed to accommodate five users, and the applicant has demonstrated the technical justification for the tower's need, the location, the height, and the type of the tower. And the applicant has met all the administrative permit use criteria. The site is located at the very south end of the county, just east of 27th Avenue Southwest. The property is zoned A1. The surrounding property to the west is a neighborhood commercial node. All that's six surrounding it, and it's actually Falcon Trace that you all looked at earlier this year. It's the southern half of Falcon Trace surrounding it, and the aerial shows that a little bit better. St. Lucie County is to the south, and we did copy the Planning Director in St. Lucie County on all the correspondence from the time this went through the Technical Review Committee on through the process. The site is agriculturally zoned, as I indicated, and it is the site of a fish farm. One of the ponds will be filled in for the tower, and the tower will be constructed in the southeast corner of the fish farm, again with Falcon Trace wrapping the site. Immediately adjacent in the Falcon Trace portion is their conservation area. So the lots are removed from that property line. It won't be backing upright to anybody when somebody does build. And again, in St. Lucie County, it's separated by a canal. Within that canal is a large electrical transmission and distribution line, and that's what the pole is intended to mimic, one of those particular poles. As far as the site plan for the tower, it's fairly simple. It's a very small lease area. It's just 60 by 60. The tower is in the center, and then there are equipment pads, future equipment pads for future users, and the one for the one user they have right now, T-Mobile. And again, that's a 60 by 60 lease area in the southeast corner of that fish farm area. There is a landscape plan, and the base of the facility will be screened by a fence, and then it'll be landscaped around with canopy trees and understory trees. With that, I would like to get to staff's recommendations. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant administrative permit approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have questions of staff? Any questions over the applicant? Would the applicant care to be heard? It should be noted that the nice thing about this, they provided a series of pictures and simulations of what this was going to appear like, which I think has helped quite a bit.
What responsibility did you receive from Port St. Lucie?
We didn't receive any comments back from St. Lucie County, and again, we've copied them through this process.
So I assume it's okay. Does you care to be heard? If not, I'm on a --
My name is Stacy Mathis, working with Riden Industries on this project. Just here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there are no questions, does anybody have a motion?
Just a comment to -- John, that's 150-foot allowance, and they're just going 120, isn't that correct?
It can be up to 150 feet, correct, and they are going 120.
120. And it's looks just like those other poles that are associated with that electrical line down to Port Pierce.
It's supposed to mimic them. They're proposing sort of dull, galvanized finish, which is essentially what those poles look like.
Thank you.
Any, if not, we need a motion if y'all are ready.
Move approval.
Greg?
That's recommendation.
Second, P R. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. It's important, since Greg lives down that way. Very close, is about the fish farm. Harbor Point is the next item on not on consent. It's a request for a major site plan and preliminary plat approval to construct the 67,310-square-foot shopping center to be known as Harbor Point. It's also quasi-judicial, and everyone's sworn, I hope.
Yes.
Okay? John? Or is this --
Thank you, Commissioner Hamner. Again, John McCoy with the Planning Department. And this is an application for major site plan and preliminary plat approval by North American Properties to develop a shopping center, and that will include a Publix grocery store. The site is located at the southeast corner of 53rd Street and US-1. And the subject site is zoned general commercial, except for the southeast corner, which is zoned RM6, and that's where the retention area is going to go, and you'll see that in a subsequent slide. This aerial shows the area, and this aerial is a July -- excuse me, January 2008 aerial. And it shows that the site was a citrus grove at one time. The surrounding uses don't show up all that well, because right now, to the north, there's a CVS; to the west, there's a Walgreens. And those are the two uses that don't show on here. And there is a hotel under construction on Indian River Boulevard. There are also some other uses that may join these before the actual center gets built. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the project. The orange shaded area are the buildings, and that's approximately 67,000 square feet of building area. The larger of the buildings is the Publix that's in the center. The olive areas are four out parcels that are proposed. The green area that you see is a tree preservation area, where they're going to preserve some of the larger oaks that are adjacent and closer to US-1. As far as traffic circulation goes, I've numbered the different driveway connections. And the driveway number one is the easternmost driveway on 53rd Street, and it's a driveway to the service entrances. And it will not have a right or left turn lane, but just merely serve the back of the buildings for truck traffic. Driveway number two is a full movement driveway. It will be served by right and left turn lanes on 53rd Street, and will also require a traffic signal. That traffic signal will need to be installed and constructed by the applicant prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the center. As we move around to the third driveway on US-1, it is limited to right in, right out. There's a median in US-1, and there'll be a right turn lane, northbound right turn lane that services that driveway. And lastly, the fourth driveway at the bottom of this slide is a full movement driveway. It's also a shared driveway with the property to the south, so they'll need an access easement for a little bit of the driveway encroachment that spills over onto that property. Again, it is a full movement driveway. It'll be served by a southbound left turn lane and a northbound right turn lane will service that driveway. So it will have turn lanes at both approaches. This slide shows the two driveway connections, and those are part of the other required improvements, are those two driveway connections to the south and to the east, the sidewalks along US-1 and 53rd Street. In addition, the applicant has to pay for his fair share of a dual southbound left turn lanes on US-1 to 53rd Street. And this plan does meet all the US-1 corridor criteria, plan criteria. And part of those criteria are architectural elevations and architectural criteria. So I put this slide in here to give you an idea about the architecture of the center. And it does portray a two-story building. It is a single story, but again, they've done that to give it the volume and to give it some architectural interest, especially for the center portion of that. As far as stormwater, it'll be collected in pipes, conveyed to the stormwater management facility, which is the lake at the south end. Once it's treated, it'll be discharged to a ditch on the south side of 53rd Street, and then eventually out that ditch to the east, to the Indian River. As far as the landscape and buffering goes, along the south side, it is residentially zoned presently, so there's a Type C buffer with a six-foot opaque feature required, and that's provided along the south. The lakeshore trees and the twirl zones around the pond, and that's on three sides of the pond, not the west side, in case the pond gets expanded to the west when the property to the -- excuse me, east develops. The foundation plantings, which are part of the US-1 corridor criteria, and then the landscape strips along 53rd Street and US-1. As far as environmental issues, there are no wetlands on the site. There are no native uplands on the site. It's been verified by our environmental planning staff. As far as tree preservation goes, they're preserving the majority of the specimen trees, which are those trees right up front. One is being removed, and mitigation is required for that, and that's taken care of on-site with the landscape plan. And there are no endangered species on this site. With that, I'd like to get to the recommendation. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant major site plan approval and preliminary plat approval with the conditions outlined in the staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have questions of staff? If not, I have just a couple real quick. One, the Type C buffer on the south, is that's the maximum required, is that correct?
That's what's required by the code, correct?
Right. And I mean, I don't have, we have no idea what's going in there, so I'm sure it's suitable. I just, that is maximum, is what's required.
Yes.
And it meets the corridor plan on US-1.
That's correct.
This is our backup, but the other thing was, is on, and this is hypothetical, and you all have heard this many times, we've got our left turn lanes, but we have no acceleration lanes. And I'm just wondering what, you know, I know a lot of places on US-1, we don't have them. I'm just wondering what it is that we object to on trying to at least give small areas where people can accelerate into traffic, because US-1's fairly busy, and it's going to be six lanes in there eventually. Any, did traffic indicate any reason for that, or just out of habit, this is what we do?
Traffic is generally not looked at acceleration lanes as an improvement that expands capacity or enhances the capacity end of it.
I'm just, my thought, and you've heard this from me a lot, and others up here, and eventually, when Chris will be here, we'll have a discussion, then it's not something that would certainly hold up tonight, but it's a safety issue when it's possible. I mean, it's on bigger roads and faster-moving roads. I just think it's something we need to note for consideration. Anybody, anything else? If not?
One comment on, there's a lot of sable palmettos and smaller oaks on the site, and I would hope you'd recommend to the developer that they utilize those on-site where possible. It's cheaper to move them than to buy new ones.
And the sable palmettos are a part of the mitigation plan, the smaller oaks are not.
Greg?
John, I think it's indicated that the turn lane responsibility for the project, for the applicant, is around $6,300. Did I read that incorrectly?
That is correct, both in the staff report, and that's also in the backup with the traffic impact analysis. And again, that's their fair share of traffic that they're contributing to the capacity of those dual lefts, southbound to eastbound.
It's not the cost of the lane itself, which is what I bet I know where he's headed.
It's a very small percentage fraction of the cost. And believe me, Chris Moore in Traffic Engine --
We've heard higher estimates on traffic lanes, and I think that may have been what was --
Exactly.
Believe me, Chris Moore in Traffic Engine would like to charge them more, but according to the study, that's their fair share, and it's a very small percentage of the cost of construction.
Two feet?
Maybe.
Yeah. Depends on whose estimate we had when they were in front of us, right? Anybody else? If not, would the applicant care to be heard? The applicant said not. Is any other questions? If not, we need a motion, please.
I'll move approval, according to staff's recommendation.
Second. We got Donna and Sam.
I defer to Donna.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Is your mic on?
She has the motion.
She has it, and we have you as second now, so. Okay, all those in favor of Sam's second, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Looks like a nice project. Next item. I don't know. Is, next item is under public hearings, consideration, the first item is consideration amendment to the regulations for changeable copy and electronic message signs within special corridors. This is legislative. Stan.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Stan Bowling, Planning Director. The next two items will be regulation amendments, and this is the first one, deals with sign regulations in special corridors. And this was actually initiated by the Board of County Commissioners, and it's before you all tonight for recommendation, too, the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners, in the last few months in particular, have had several initiatives relating to business-friendly initiatives and economic development initiatives, and this is actually one of them. And it's based on an inquiry from a business owner along US-1, which is one of our special corridors, and his desire, although he has a cell-service storage business, our existing special corridor regulations do not allow changeable copy or electronic message signs for anything other than places of assembly like churches or theaters and gas prices. So the gist of his request to be allowed to have his specials and sales and so forth on a changeable sign, you know, there's talk about doing temporary signs, there's talk about doing it on permanent signs, and the board gave us the direction to initiate an amendment, and this is the amendment, to allow on permanent signs in the corridors, changeable copy and electronic message regardless of what type of commercial or industrial use it is. So that's the gist of this particular proposal. There have been some adjustments to sign regulations within corridors. We had two of them back in 2000. One dealt with signs close to the interchanges, and the other with window signs. Again, the purpose of this particular amendment is to allow businesses to display, you know, sales and special events, things that change that they're providing or they're selling on a permanent sign. We have several special corridors within the county, kind of going from south to north. We have special corridor area along Oslo Road, within the unincorporated area of the county, along US-1, Indian River Boulevard, 37th Street, up in the Wabaso area, our first corridor, all the way out 510 and 512, on the North Barrier Island, which is almost exclusively residential, and up US-1 in the Roseland area. And we have, through this process, staff has contacted committee members that several of these quarters have ongoing review committee members, and we've contacted them and sent them the information that you all have. We may have some input from some of them. Most of the regulations with respect to signs in these corridors are not changing. Sign size and number, the monument-style requirements, those are not changing, and we're focusing on changeable copy and electronic message copied portions of signs. There are several regulatory approaches to these types of signs. Changeable copy is a manually changeable type of sign, and electronic message is usually programmed. And there are a couple of different ways that not only Indian River County, but other jurisdictions regulate these signs. One is by the amount or percent of copy area of a total sign, and I'll show you some examples of those later in this PowerPoint. The other is to limit message change frequency for electronic message, to control flashing or scrolling or animation sort of thing, or how quickly a sign can change. If it changes too quickly, it could distract motorists and so forth. Also, regulations tend to dwell on the background color of different types of signs, and then also regulating the brightness of LED signs, which can be, can be very intense. For our research, we looked at 10 jurisdictions, and this is reflected in your backup material with respect to changeable copy and electronic message signs, and also 10 for the brightness standards for LED signs. As far as local input, a couple of things that I'll be showing you, and I do have to give a word about Brister signs. They've always been good through the years when we've had sign regulations, and I want to know, you know, what things cost, or what kind of materials are out there, and what's standard for the industry and so forth. So they've given us information, too. That's kind of our check out there in the real world, so to speak, with what's available, and they're always one of the first to try to make sure that they understand our sign regulation changes, because they do a lot of business in the county. The other, we have some local in-the-field examples, and really relied on some of the examples in Vero Beach in particular, and I'll go through those now. This is an example in the city of Vero Beach of a changeable copy sign with 80%. 20% of this sign is permanent and not changeable. That's kind of, and this is typical of what you'd see, a permanent banner across here. And then the other 80% here is actually, you know, white background, black lettering, and that's pretty typical, highest contrast sort of thing. And this is allowed now in our special quarters, for instance, for churches or other places of assembly. And there's no proposal to change any of this for these types of uses. They can still have the white background, they can have 80% changeable copy, and that's, so that's no change. But this is just an example, and we see a lot of churches tend to have the changeable copy signs with a permanent band across the top. This is a changeable copy sign that doesn't, you know, rise to that kind of maximum envelope, and again, we see all types of proportions. This one is also in the city of Vero Beach, and has a bigger kind of permanent band, and about, a little under 60% of the area is changeable copy. Again, black lettering for kind of the high contrast. We have commercial businesses that use these as well. This is in the city of Vero Beach, and if you look at the total copy area, which is really in two segments on this sign, and let me just go ahead and say something. While we're looking at these examples, even though a lot of these are in the city of Vero Beach, and they're on poles, pole signs are not allowed in the county corridors, so we're not allowing the pole part that you see on here. They would contain to be monument-style sign. But if you looked at the copy area, which is in two segments here, this is a proportion that's actually being recommended, and that's of the total permanent sign, no more than 40% of it can be changeable copy area, and then the rest has to be, has to be permanent. And we think that proportion is reasonable, and actually sets up a fairly good aesthetic proportion. This is another 40% type of sign that's in the, in the city of Vero Beach. Again, ignore the pole, please, down here on this part. 40% changeable copy, and then the rest is permanent. And again, tends to be a pretty good proportion, advertising mostly, you know, the permanent business and its name and so forth, or logo, and then what changes is a smaller amount of the area. 50% changeable copy sign. This is one of the few examples that we have around where they're not using the black lettering, they use the red lettering on the white background. Electronic fuel price signs, this is in the city of Vero Beach as well, and this is just a very much smaller area. The only part that's electronic message and is changeable is the price of fuel. And this did not mean that the gasoline was free on this particular day. I wish that were the case, but it's not. And one of the things I just wanted to illustrate on these two, this slide and the next one, is that you might have noticed in the proposed regulations, we had the changing of the message as perceived by the naked human eye, and that's because many times, these actually do flash, they kind of save energy and so forth that way. So I just happened to catch this one when this one was not on, but to the naked eye, it appears constant. And I managed to get this one when, again, they really aren't free. But they, you know, they change these electronically and have, you know, computer programs to change.
Consider that 40%.
So this is actually less than 40, because again, the actual area that's electronic message is just the black area here. That would be the only part of the copy area. This is in the city of Vero Beach, again, 50/50 kind of on, if you look at the copy area that I'm pointing in the arrow here, and then the permanent. I'll go ahead and make a statement on brightness while we have this particular one up here. Checking with Brister signs on what the actual brightness standards that we're proposing, everything that's in the county and in the city meet those standards. So what we see out in the field is the kind of brightness that would be allowed and continue to be allowed, but we set a brightness standard that I'll get into a little bit more detail in a moment. Just wanted to let you know that the signs that you're seeing, the examples that you're seeing, and any that you see in our area would not exceed what's proposed, just to give you an idea of the brightness levels. This is a 40% sign. Again, if you didn't have the poles, this would be, you could kind of take a look at this proportion if it were a monument-style sign. That's in the city as well. And this is a 20%. If you've got just a small kind of time and temperature change, you know, 20% might be adequate. This is also in the city of Vero Beach. The proposed amendments deal with electronic message signs and the changeable copy signs. One of the proposals is to limit to 40%, and I mentioned that on some of the examples of the overall sign copy area as for electronic message, and require that they be black background. Also, to limit the frequency of message change to no more than once every 30 seconds. And that's the same as in the city of Vero Beach, seems to be effective, they think it's been effective, to, again, to keep down some things that can be distracting, especially to motorists. The brightness standards, these are the standards that are almost, so to speak, standard in the industry and in regulations now. Almost all the jurisdictions we surveyed had these two standards. A much higher standard during daylight conditions, and NITS is a non-scientific way, I guess, of talking about candles per square meter, and 500 during dusk-to-dawn conditions. In the background, daylight or dark conditions make a huge difference in what you need, the brightness you need. Also, we understand from the industry that most manufacturers now kind of accept these as limits, and so it's pretty, becoming standard in the industry. And most of the installations apparently are actually a little bit below these standards because it saves on the electric bill. And so it's also standard for this next requirement, which is to have an automatic dimmer system, which looks at the background lighting conditions. It could be on a cloudy day, or at night, or during full sunshine, and automatically dims them to meet these standards. And again, it saves electricity, so I think, you know, most applicants or owners are aware of that, and those are built-in standard equipment now. Local examples, again, none exceed the proposed brightness standards, but I think one of the reasons why the brightness standards are important, and actually, the PSAC recommended this be added to the first draft the staff had, and that is, you could get, I mean, there certainly are LED signs manufactured that are very intense and could be very distracting, and so it's good to have some quantifiable standards in there. We don't currently have the equipment to measure these at the face of the sign. Sign companies do, and they actually are less than $100 for a handheld one. So if we get an intense brightness situation, that's when we would go out and check. With respect to allow to the changeable copy signs for industrial and commercial, again, same kind of proportion is limit to 40% of the overall sign copy area. And not for places of assembly, which are already allowed to have 80%, but for other types of uses, to not let the, have the background be pure white, but to let it be a light color. What you tend to get, kind of, it's more aesthetic to not have a pure white background. It's very bright, and actually kind of a little bit fuzzy at night when you're looking at the contrasting letters, so this is kind of an aesthetic consideration here. Also, too, as I mentioned, to continue untouched what's allowed already for places of assembly and theaters, and we add it in institutional and civic uses, because we tend to see, again, those would mostly be places of assembly where you've got changing events. It wouldn't necessarily be a church or a theater. You could have McKee Gardens, for instance, conceivably be, you know, a civic use if they had a lot of events and that sort of thing. That's it for the slides that I had. The other thing that I did want to mention, that just in terms of the cost of the electronic message signs versus the changeable copy, it's a huge order of magnitude, more than 10 times -- than 10 times as much for the same copy area to do changeable copy as it is electronic message. In fact, my understanding is a typical electronic message sign these days would run about $15,000, and manufacturers have, you know, monthly payment programs, that sort of thing for them. So it's, it's not like, we'll probably see a lot of those, except for those businesses that, you know, that could afford them. And I think changeable copy would probably be, continue to be the norm, just given the prices that are involved. That's it in terms of summarizing the, the regulations that are proposed, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. And again, this, this is a public hearing and there may be people that have comments.
Anybody have any questions of staff? Oh, I have a couple. Number one, you know, we've prevented and throughout the quarters neon lights, is there any, there's no possible interpretation to allow neon lights on these signs or changeable copy? Is that?
That's correct. No, neon, neon lighting is.
That's clearly defined.
That's correct, it's a separate prohibition altogether.
The other part was, is I was thinking about one of the signs on South US-1 that's a changeable billboard. Does that, how does that, how is this affect or how does that affect, or is that affected in these corridor plans? Because they've, they've become more popular where they do change. I've noticed during our election, we get several new faces coming up on one billboard, and I, that's 100%.
Right, and that's not, we treat that as a billboard, we don't, that's not a changeable copy sign or electronic message sign. It's a billboard that, that is changeable and actually you kind of, kind of, if you've noticed, they, they tend to change not very quickly because the whole picture changes.
But, but we've had the experience now, and it hasn't been terrible, but we've had the experience where we've had a billboard used as a sign. This was out on Highway 60 on one property, I was thinking the fireworks, where the, where the billboard was actually the sign location, it just was up on the pole for I-95, which, you know, was smart at the time, you know, good sense for them, but, you know, down on the US, in the US-1 corridor, Oslo or in the quarters, is there anything that stops or keeps these pole signs that would be a, considered billboard being put up that would be affect any of this?
The billboard locations, they're off premises signs and they're, they're limited as to where they can go. We don't tend to see many new locations. I, I think what you saw years ago were probably replacement signs and actually tended to be a little bit smaller because they're expensive to, to do. So I don't, you won't see freestanding signs like that at businesses, they'll only be where off premises billboards can be located.
What was the last item, is what, on the, what is the logic, and maybe someone else will help me on the, the industrial and commercial? I mean, I can understand retail without any question, but I wasn't sure, I, I'm kind of lost on commercial or industrial, what they, why would they need changeable signs?
Well, again, the, the person that brought this up, the owner of the, of the storage, self-storage businesses, you know, he has specials that you'll have for sale.
I was just saying, okay, that would be, okay. That's just commercial then?
That's, that's correct.
So we don't consider them retail?
Right, they're, they're not a, they're not a place of assembly, a theater or a church, we don't have any allowance right now.
Got it, okay. Nobody else, then I'm going to open.
Yeah, I have one.
All right, it's just that.
Stan, on the, the provision for messages not changing more frequently than once every 30 seconds, how does that affect or does it capture signs that have either an, an image or a written message that moves, but it, it, the image doesn't change, it moves, or the message doesn't change, it, it moves, and, and by virtue of the movement captures eyes and is distracting, and then the message may change every 30 seconds?
Right, there's a, there's a prohibition on the kind of signs that give the optical illusion of movement sort of thing, so.
I think you said about things that move.
Like scrolling letters?
Right, scrolling and animation, that sort of thing. So I, I, I think it's covered in other prohibitions. Some jurisdictions, besides just having outright prohibition, which is what we have, also have an amount of time that the change can take place, you know, on the full face of it being usually one second or two seconds, that sort of thing. But I think we're covered with an outright prohibition of the, of that, that type of use. We're looking at, you know, one message essentially at, at one point in time.
But we're not opening.
That's correct.
But if that one message scrolls down the sign, you have the same message, are you even allowed to scroll?
That's the appearance of movement.
Okay.
And so, I mean, he believes it's prohibited, and I think it's, you know, the intent would be, intention of this is to maintain that, I guess.
Well, I noticed that there was another community that had a land development regulation that specifically stated that, that that was not allowed, and, and since there has been some concern, is there some way we can specifically state?
We, we can certainly add that in, in this, because the very section that's being proposed, it changes the prohibited signs section, and we could certainly add, add language.
I would like to see that, so that there's no question about that. I mean, this isn't even on the books and we've already had some questions about it. I have, did you have some more to add?
The, the only reason that I was bringing it up was because I know in other jurisdictions, people have expressed concern with it in, in relation to highway safety.
Right, certainly, yeah. I, that's definitely in the literature, that that's one of the reasons to regulate.
Anything else?
Yes. When you have a, a commercial area where you have a number of these signs, you know, business after business after business, the 30-second issue may become more of a distraction. And, and what I've seen that, there might be, could we maybe look instead of having 40% change, a 40% movable sign change every 30 seconds, we allow 20% to change every 30 seconds, 40% to change every two minutes, and then the 80% could be once every 24 hours? Because would you look at reducing that 40% that changes every 30 seconds to maybe 20% changing every 30 seconds?
I guess I'm trying to follow the, the logic of having the different, the different sequences. I, I guess we, in your first example, you might have different signs within the same range of vision that's changing at different points in time. Just a couple of things. I think one thing that, that I noticed the last, you know, several weeks driving around, you know, Vero Beach, and, and what the 30-second, the 30-second timeframe, once you're used to that, if you're looking, if you, you know, don't have that much of a life and you're looking at signs all the time, if, if the county were consistent with the city of Vero Beach, you, you really get to know as a motorist that you're not going to see that sign change, so you don't look at it to see that it changes. And I think being consistent with the city will, will help in, in that, in that regard. I think if you've got different things changing at different times on the sign, not only is it kind of complex, maybe from an enforcement standpoint, but I, I think it's better to have.
Oh, no, no, that's not what I'm saying.
What she's saying is, I think, is if you've got four businesses with four signs, however far apart, and their 30 seconds is different, you're going through and you're getting a flash, flash, flash.
Right.
Eventually, one of them may move while you're driving by, but I don't.
So my objective really is to change that 30 seconds to two minutes.
Right, and, I mean, I, I think the 30-second rule is actually on the fairly stringent side in terms of the other things, other jurisdictions that we looked at, and I think it's, it's effective. I think we probably won't be getting a whole lot of electronic message signs because, you know, maybe they're expensive, maybe they'll come down in price, you know, I don't know, but.
Well, I happen to pass one just about every day that is very offensive, so that's why I'm, I'm a little more maybe sensitive to some of this that's going on in here because it is extremely offensive sign. And.
Is it offensive or distracting?
Distracting.
It's offensive, I gotta get it in my email so I can pass it around.
What's distracting about it?
The, the constant movement, the amount of, of copy area that does move, the speed with which it moves, and the brightness.
So it's more, it's moving quicker than the 30-second?
Yes. Oh, yes. And, and the brightness, it's.
We may have aired that all the signs in the county qualify, then we may have one that doesn't.
Well, I actually, this is not a county sign, this is in a different jurisdiction within the county. But because of it, I have become a little more concerned about the changes that we're allowing here.
So I guess that, that particular sign, you know, the 30-second rule, if it applied to that sign, would make things different and then the no animation or scrolling probe clearly, clearly being on that. But you're, you're right, Indian River Mall, you know, would not meet this, you know, prohibition, and, and their sign package was approved before the corridor requirements.
Right.
So that's why the mall, Indian River Mall has, you know, kind of a, a lot of movement on its, on its.
Oh, and I wasn't even referring to the mall's.
No, I know you weren't, I'm, I'm going to our jurisdiction just to let you know.
There are, there are signs that are grandfathered, even in the current quarter.
That's correct, and they would be grandfathered in the county.
So you really, you.
I think the 30-second, I mean, that's my own opinion. I, it's, you can pick different times, but I, I think it's good to be consistent with another jurisdiction if it's worked there, and it, it is actually on the stringent side of the amount of limitations on frequency of change in, in what we researched.
Okay, well, you can talk me into that.
Chalk that one up, you better write it down.
Hey, I'm not gonna, I can't, yeah, choose your battles. This one isn't worth it. Okay, if sign faces a residential area and is within 100 feet of a residence, can we reduce that knit from 500 to 250 at night?
You, some jurisdictions do have a distance from a residence and that sort of thing. Actually, I, based on the research, I'm comfortable with the 500 at night, and given in our jurisdiction, the, kind of the small area signs, some of the jurisdictions that have those allow huge signs in the jurisdiction, so I think you've got more of an issue there. And I, I got, you know, with, I think, so I think it's, I think it's covered, and I'm concerned about actually where we might want to mix residential and commercial uses and so forth, not to, not, not to get into that issue. I think dark, the size of signs that we allow in that 500 is, is efficient.
How bright is the street light?
Um, yes, different brightness. Let me give you a, a good idea of 500. A 500 NIT or 400, right around in there. If you see the LED signs along a lot of the walkways inside airport terminals that are LED, they're really high quality, they look like TV, that's 400 to 500, and that's about, you know, that's kind, that's not a high lighting level surrounded.
Inside a terminal?
Yeah.
But normally, that's not dark?
Right, it's, it's not as dark as, as, as night background, but if you want to get an idea for what 400 to 500 NITS is, that's what, that's what you see.
I'm getting shot down, item.
I'm just trying to give you examples, I, you know, I, I don't know, I go through the post figures after midnight, so I see them when they're dark.
My next question, on the ambient light monitor. This LDR, as it's written, says, okay, we have 5,000 at daylight, 500 at dusk. There are some jurisdictions that request or require ambient lighting throughout the day, not just a, a change from one to another, as the, if it gets cloudy, that the, the light goes down.
Yeah, and that's why our regulation talks about daylight conditions, background lighting conditions, and dusk to dawn lighting conditions, which is, and, and actually, this is already standard equipment. I mean, actually, you know, dimming does occur with most equipment when they get cloudy.
You believe you've addressed the conditions rather than the time?
It's not a time, it's not a time of day issue, it is the actual background lighting, and there are sensors on all the signs.
Okay, so we are requiring the sensors that gradually take it down as it gets cloudy?
Right, that's what, that, that's why the, the standard is background lighting conditions. So it could be, it could be a cloudy day and they'd have to be dimmed.
Okay, and I have a question, and because I don't, I, I, what is, why are you limiting the color of the lights and the color of the background? I know you have a reason, I just don't know what it is.
Okay, are you talking about for the changeable copy, the background?
Yes.
The, the idea there is that at night, especially, when you have an illuminated white kind of translucent background, it kind of gives a fuzzy light glow that's not aesthetic, and it's, and you get almost as much contrast with just a little bit off-white color. And it actually improves the contrast a little bit at night of the, of the actual message.
And the color of the LEDs?
Some jurisdictions regulate them. I didn't find any reason in the literature to regulate the, the color. I think with the intensity standards that we're proposing, I don't think it would, it would matter.
Okay, all right, you answered this question. All right, then I have, just, why are we including, making this change to the North Barrier Island corridor? I mean, I just, that just astounds me.
Well, yeah, I, I actually don't think, I'm, I'm doubtful that there would be any places in the North Barrier Island corridor that, that this would be used since they're residential development. So you conceivably could have, maybe if you ever had a church go in, which I doubt too, actually, along the North Barrier Island, you, you do have the one commercial area there, right at 510 in A-1A, that small commercial area, which would be the only place I could think of that it could go in. The idea was this, we didn't distinguish between corridors, you know, I think if there's a business reason for having it, there's a business reason for having it, and it should be aesthetic, and what we come up with should be aesthetic. But, but staff didn't, didn't recommend, you know, discerning between the different quarters, and that's, that's why.
I would suggest that there is a big difference between the North Barrier Island and, and US-1. It's just fundamentally different.
Well, and I think that's why the zoning is very different there, and I think the potential is very different.
I think that, I think that, in fairness to staff here, I think that what, that when they put these quarters in, and I had forgotten frankly that they included, they just wrapped around the North Barrier Island, I'd forgotten, I thought it stopped at Wabaso in the commercial area, but it, it didn't, I think it's kind of out of.
Yeah, it was intentionally to, to, to deal with some of, especially residential development entryways and that sort of thing, is mostly what, what the effect was.
But maybe we should consider specifically saying that this would not be allowed on the North Barrier Island corridor.
You, you could have a rationale and make that recommendation, certainly.
If you still have commercial businesses on that 510 and A-1A area, they should be allowed, yeah, the same privilege of this, that other businesses would have here.
I think some of the concern might be the, the environmental concern with.
You get into turtles and, I mean, it's not just, I mean, I don't know, the Pelican Island group doesn't want to sign on A-1A advertising this way to the island or anything, do they? So.
I, I think the environmental community would complain about that.
Safely. Okay.
The primary difference is obviously the North Barrier Island area, while it does have some businesses, is about 99.9% residential, whereas the US-1 corridor is about probably 85% commercial. So that's a, you know, that's why I would recommend that consideration be given to just saying this is not going to apply to that corridor.
And it's not like they're competing with other businesses in a corridor because there are only a few there. So it's, I.
If they choose to want to put up changeable copy for their, for their particular business.
Well, I'm more concerned about the LED lights. That's where your changeable copy's going to come in, that's going to be a problem.
Well, with, with North A-1A, if, if you're talking about from, really from Bobby's North, there isn't any commercial.
The corridor is actually from Wabaso.
Right, right, I realize that, but the, the prime, main residential area there is from Bobby's North, there isn't anything else commercial?
There's commercial property at the corner of Jungle Trail and, and 510 that is in Town of Orchid.
At 510, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I, I can't imagine that they're going to be big on changeable copy LEDs.
Not today anyway, but it's, you know, it's about, it's, the other part had, would be concerns if you had a, for some reason, I assume, if, if you had a housing development that wanted to have their sign lit up, in some way, is you're welcome to John Doe's new housing development that, that would be going in at one point. So I mean, this would prevent that if you said no. Businesses on the Wabaso, at the end of Wabaso.
Right, changeable copy electronic messages for commercial industrial only, it would not be allowed.
Okay, so that we're limited there, so, okay. Anybody, any other comments or any other questions for staff?
I just wanted to take them in, Stan and your staff, for what a great, yeah, thorough job of research and information all together. I mean, not only aligning the detail.
The percentages of signs, it's, you know, the visual side of it, which makes it a little easier.
Thank you for the information.
Okay, anybody, we're going to open the public hearing. Anyone in the public care to speak? We're going to start over on the right and work to the left, so the godfather of the corridors is over here on the right, so we're going to start with him and then we'll work to the left.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gene Waddell. I have been on the State Road 60 Task Force since 1998, I believe, and it's an ongoing committee authored by the, authorized by the County Commission, and I probably, I'm noticed on all of the TRC meetings for anything that goes on or is proposed out State Road 60. And I'm probably able to attend half, three quarters maybe, and I have to say, I personally am very proud of what State Road 60 looks like. And I want to speak to you because I do not agree with this ordinance. We're in a time, an economic time that, that really brought this issue forward, and I think we all feel that this is temporary. This too shall pass. And, you know, there's a saying on suicide, it's a permanent solution to a temporary problem, and I think that's probably what this ordinance does to us. problem, and I think that's probably what this ordinance does to us. Uh, all your talk about, uh, 5,000 nits and 4,000, 400 nits, and, and this percentage and that percentage can all go away if you do not pass this thing. It all becomes a moot point. It seems like many times when, when times get tough like this, um, the proposal is a bigger, brighter, gaudier, flashier thing is going to bring more business my way, and that's just not the case in the time that we're in. People just don't have the money, and you can make it as big and bright and flashy and gaudy as you want to, they're still not going to come into your place of business if they don't want or need your service. It's, um, for those of you who've been here a long time, this started back in the 1970s when the city of Vero Beach began implementing their zoning ordinances and their landscape ordinances and their sign ordinances, and they were way out in front of the county. I mean, you couldn't, it seemed like you couldn't do anything in the city of Vero, and whatever you wanted to do in the county was okay. And I have to compliment you folks and the County Commission in the last few years, especially since 1998. I think we were the second, Wabaso was probably the first corridor, but since nineteen ninety-eight, the county has far surpassed the city of Vero Beach, and if you will notice, all of the examples that Stan put up there were city of Vero Beach examples. And if you want to open Pandora's box, and let the cat out of the bag and the camel's nose under the tent, you just pass this thing, and you'll be out there with light meters, and first it's, it's this kind of sign, and then they're going to come back next year, and they're going to want to do away with the monument signs, and we want to put them back up on poles again, and it's going to be nibble, 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 until when you drive down US-1, you are not proud of Vero Beach. You've got a 192, you've got a Fort Pierce, you've got a whatever you want to call it, but it is not Vero Beach anymore. That's what's made Vero Beach the way it is, because we've set standards, we've set very high standards, and we have stuck to them, and I urge you to not pass this, and do not change the standards that this community loads by. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene. Anybody else over on this half? Any of, any of our scouting brothers and sisters? Okay, uh, yes, come on up.
I'm here wearing two hassens, unfortunately.
We have to give us your name.
Donna Parkins has got laryngitis, and she has a letter I'm reading into the record.
You need to give us your name and address.
My name is Fred Mencing.
All right, thank you, Fred. And your address?
Seventy-five eighty-one hundred twenty-ninth Street, Roseland.
Thank you.
Donna Parkins is at eight zero six six, one hundred and forty-first Street, Sebastian Melwing address in Ursle Doon, Roseland.
Okay.
And she is addressing you as follows, Indian River County Planning and Zoning Committee, speaking as a resident of Ursle Doon Heights in Rosen, a member of the Friends of Historic Rosen, and as the historian of Rosen, I am completely against any changes or exceptions to our Rosen Corridor Plan, especially regarding business signs in Rosen on US-1 and Rosen Road. Thank you, Donna Parkins.
This is a great government, even when I can't speak, I can be heard.
Thank you, ma'am, we, we appreciate your input.
Okay, now, I'm Fred Mencing, I'm speaking as the Acting President of Friends of Historic Rosen, I am the Vice President, we do not have a President.
I see this right, I think for all of you.
Thank you.
This letter is addressed from the Friends of Historic Rosen at PO Box 201 Rosen Two, the Indian River County Planning and Zoning Commission, Vero Beach. On the 21st of April 2009, our membership meeting, about twenty, forty-five minutes was devoted to the proposed changes in the sign ordinance. These documents were available to our, our staff. By resolution, the membership, with 40% of the dues paid members present during this meeting, 103% of those present voted that the Friends of Historic Rosen Request Planning and Zoning Committee exclude any changes in the signs covered by the Rosen Corridor Plan of 2003. By a letter presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 23rd of April 2009, by our resolution, we are not giving opinion or advice to other corridor plans, as that is up to the residents of that, those areas. By this letter, we hope you will can, give consideration to our request, as if we were here with a busload of residents, each to speak his or her voice. This letter is sent in the hope that you will be thankful we've not fled your meeting with many voices. Sincerely, Fred Mencing, Acting President, President, Property Owners.
Thank you, Fred, at all.
If you have any questions, y'all attempt to answer them, otherwise, no.
Okay, thank you.
That's our position.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public care to speak? One of our local reporters and ex-candidate, Charlie?
Hi, Charlie Wilson, 1057 Sixth Avenue. Oh, and welcome, Commissioners and Members, this is the first time I've seen, here at a meeting where, where you were present. Uh, I don't have a position on this particular issue, but I just wanted to tell you, I'm a partner in the business that owns those signs that pearl, they're called Trivisions, and, um, I can probably answer some of your questions that, if you happen to have them, or if you want to ask me when it's, when it's time about how often they turn and why they turn that way.
You're talking about the billboards?
Yeah, yes, and because all of the boards that we own are off-premises boards.
Right.
And aren't really affected by this particular, by this particular issue. In fact, the more restrictive you make it, frankly, the more valuable my property becomes because you can't have any more permits, but, um, but I, just listening to some of the questions you were asking, there are answers to some of those questions from the, from the, the business point of view, and if you want to know, you know, I'll, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to tell you.
It sounds like, I think it sounds like the first thing we've got to decide is how bad we want these in these corridors in these times, and after that, I think the questions may either come or responses fairly easily, so, thank you, Charlie.
It'll come a little bit, the, the, one small thing about the, the Barrier Island as an example, you know, there are a couple of places on the Barrier Island where, where electronic signs might become available, particularly at the, I understand, I think at the foot of the, the Seventeenth Street Bridge, the, uh, Northern Trust has a small area there that actually is a commercial sliver where that branch is. Um, the other thing is on the background colors, the questions about the background colors, you know, sometimes, and that'll come up in the next issue, the really, you know, the reason I'm here tonight is to talk about the next issue, because as an example, that somebody tried to put up a sign that had a red apple at a school, well, if, if they had to go get a pink apple, you know, there's some kind of restrictions with color. Walgreens, the Walgreens picture they showed you, when the logo of Walgreens is red, you, it's going to be hard for you to say, well, Walgreens, you're going to have to make that beige, and so, I, I just kind of want to, the staff did a wonderful job putting this together, and I, again, I have no issues, but there are a couple of little things in there that y'all might want to just think about.
Thank you.
Background restriction is only for the changeable copy portion of the sign, is it not?
The, that's correct. When you, when you have a, a rear illuminated sign, whether it is changeable copy or not in the quarters.
Oh.
Um, it can't be a, a, a pure white background, it has to be off-white, and it's that same aesthetic reason I was talking about, especially at night, you, you eliminate that pure white sort of glow. So what you tend to see in the corridors is the, the corporate logo colors, let's say it's, it's blue, uh, you'll wind up with a kind of a darker blue background and white letters, and actually, that contrast works really well, and you'll see that in the corridor, versus if you went outside the corridor, you might see the reverse, white, bright background and blue corporate letters. So, um, it actually winds up with a little more color on, on the rear illuminated sign, and it's much more aesthetic at night.
Isn't that Sixteenth Street Bridge where Charlie was talking about in the city?
Yes, he's talking about, no, he's talking about, it's, it's Northern, um, Triangle there at the, on the A1A, is that city?
Yes, the city.
That county's further down.
Correct.
Okay, um, anybody else in the public care to speak? Public hearing is closed, uh, I guess we'll go to discussion and then look for a motion, how people feel about it.
I'm worried, I'm, I'm wondering if the, uh, the public objection to something like this is not so much the changeable copy as much it is the LED lights? And, and, and Mr. Waddell, actually, I was, I would like you to answer that, what your discussion has been regarding the corridor, is it the LED lights that are objectionable?
You see, I'm open to public hearing again, so, Gene, come back up, that's all right, go ahead.
Donna, what I have is just an opinion, we haven't, there, the, I am the task force right now, so, that's the best kind of committee to have, you know? But, when I drive out 60, uh, going home every night, for that being the busiest commercial section in this whole county, you hardly know it's a commercial section. There, there are no bright signs, there are no, other than the one at the mall which got in before, it was part of the P, uh, PED, PED thing, so we didn't have any control over that, and that was before the corridor plan. But, there's nothing that, that degrades that whole corridor like these signs will. And, um, it, again, I don't know whether it's the LED, I don't know whether it's the, uh, the other lights, but it's a nice, soft, commercial corridor to go through.
Would the elimination of, of allowing LED make this palatable?
No, not, not with what he's talking about. I know Gene's, he's against it completely.
No, I'm just, I'm against the whole thing, all, all of the lights.
Where, where you go along through there, um, say from Forty-third Avenue on the 60 corridor, because that's where it begins, I think, um, the mobile station on the south side of 60, don't they have a changeable, like, they have gas?
Gas stations.
Gas prices are one of the exceptions to changeable copy now.
So, so then that excludes the stuff at, at 95 as well.
Correct.
But like, say where you have the Olive, I'm, I'm just thinking about what Gene's talking about, like where the Olive Garden is, um, or I think there's a, a Wachovia Bank out there that actually has a, a, a red LED sign with a black background.
I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, I know the bank was there before the 60 requirements, I don't know if they have anything grandfathered, and I can't recall, actually, I'm, it's been a few different named banks in the last...
See what's, what's objectionable to this versus like the sign that Olive Gardens got out there. I guess it's a plastic molded sign.
There's nothing on the Olive Garden sign that moves.
There's nothing changeable.
So it's just that it's not, not moving at all?
I think.
Not distracting?
Right.
So it's the movement that's really bothering you?
Yes.
Gene, do you see, uh, this as a, an allowance for businesses to increase their advertising and the attention drawn to them, and then a competitiveness among different advertisers and leading to a gaudiness?
Yes, I do.
Is that what you're, that's what you're seeing?
Yes, I do. If it, if it wasn't for any of the ordinances that you have now on the books, the meetings that I've sat through, and I'm sure the staff have backed me up on this, left to their own accord, businesses would have things as big as you, as they could afford to put up there. They'd all have billboards in front of their businesses, if you'd let them.
Gene, how would you feel about, uh, allowing a business to change their copy once every 24 hours?
I just don't think that the changeable copy signs are, uh...
Attractive.
...attractive things to have.
Whether they're, they're just like church signs that are changeable, or whether they're electronically changeable, you...
You've got the, the three or four exemptions that you will see all the time, the churches, the gas stations, um...
The civic.
The civic.
It's coming out.
But if you have a sign like a church sign where you can just move the letters manually, is, is that as objectionable as well?
Well, on a church sign, it's, it's permissible because...
Right, but, but I'm saying if a business chose to use a sign like that, where, where they have to go out and change letters, you know they're not going to be doing it several times a day.
It's the same thing, you know, you use a backwards E for a three, they end up doing all kinds of stuff like that, because it's achieving everything.
Gene, would it be fair to, just say, besides the objection, that you also feel like you, that you, the objection to the sign and its appearance, that you do, you personally don't feel this generates any business?
I don't think so. I think we're...
Okay, I mean, because I think that's the, you know, there's a, there's, you've got to decide really whether what you think it actually generates business, in time, whether it's this time or into the future economics, this is appearance, and then it's also economics and, and advertising, so...
The, the, the business that brought this forward, yeah, they might rent an extra, uh, storage stall, you know, you can't deny that type thing, but, let me tell you where this is, to me, this is kind of leading, as I made City of Vero Beach the, the bad example, the city of Vero Beach, about two months ago, brought forward by of all places Ocean Drive businesses, approved the use of these sandwich boards out by the sidewalk for these businesses to advertise.
Fortunately, we're not talking about sandwich boards tonight, Gene.
What I'm telling you, what I'm telling you, this is the first step. Next year is step two, and the year after that is step three, and, and pretty soon you're going to have sandwich boards, I mean, I would, as much as I hate...
In your opinion, and we appreciate that, if anything else, hang on, we're going to just stop you there for a minute, because you were asked some questions because of your background and head of the task force, after that, we're going to have to hold you to it, okay? I see the rest of the, huge audience railing in their seats, ready to jump up, and I'm not sure how many opinions we can stand, but that's, okay, any other questions of Gene? About the corridor and the lighting, because he does have a lot of experience in that. Okay, in fair, in fairness to the world, Fred, I'll give you two seconds, if you've got an opinion about the lighting and what she, the question was asked about the LED lighting, et cetera, not, we're not selling or pitching now, we're talking about the question.
The question, the LED lighting and the changeable sign, there is no question in my mind that the membership wants neither.
In your area, your letter is very clear, so...
We're only talking about the Rosen area, the rest of the county, we're not...
We got you, okay, thank you, you, we've been reiterated, okay. Public hearing is closed again, anybody else? Ladies, if you have questions, if they want, go ahead.
No, I don't, I don't, I was just going to thank Mr. Waddell, because I think the great wisdom he's brought to this debate, just to reframe it a little bit about what you said, was, there is some cost, and I think reasonable people can disagree on what the cost is to our aesthetic environment of past, of allowing this ordinance, but the opposite side is, how big do we think the benefit really is?
Right.
How big do we think the benefit really is? There's going to be some cost, we can all acknowledge that, maybe a lot, maybe a little, depending on where you stand on the divide, but I think, as I think about it, and I'm a commercial real estate developer, I'm skeptical of the benefit, I, and I'm not sure it's that, it's that much. That's my opinion.
Fair enough, I think that's fair enough. Okay, any other discussion? Pilar, David, I mean, I, I think that, thank you, Sam, I think it kind of frames it fairly well, so I guess we need to, this has been put forth to us, one of the other dilemmas that we face, if you want to consider it a dilemma, we've, this was, the staff was asked to do this by the County Commission, um, all of which may have appointed us, hasn't spoken to us necessarily about this, but on the other hand, they've asked that it come to us and, and be considered, and I think that's a fair way to put it, it's, it's still only being considered, and, you know, we're not necessarily told what to do here, Lord knows we pass it around, but, at any rate, I think that we need to send a, a message, either we do this, or we don't do it, or we have modifications, we exempt some people, or not, so I think we need a motion. If anyone cares to try? General feeling?
Skepticism.
Well, I think that, I think that, I think, I think that, because this is going on to the commission anyway, is that correct? With whatever motion we make, it comes steps through.
That's correct.
I think if you're, if you are skeptical, and then, and I'll say this, because this is, and various people know, I mean, from a pro-business, Sam, I take credence with what you say, I mean, that, the fact that, you know, we all believe business, and I, we don't want to cut anybody any short times on business now, but, the question is whether you open the toe under the, camel's nose under the tent, whether that's a problem or not, I think if you're skeptical of this, then you should probably just say, we're not in favor of doing this at all, and send it to the commission. If you feel like it's a good idea, and you think it's good only in the US-1 corridor, then frame it for just the US-1 corridor and a certain distance, and cut all the other corridors out, um, we can do that as well. So I think that you just need to think about where, whether or not this is a benefit that businesses really need, or is it just the beginning of a change of, so, that's my...
George, I think that, uh, that this, uh, the message we send should be in the form of a vote.
Oh, we're, we're going to have, we, we're going to vote on a motion, it's, we're kind of, we're not... not, we're not, we're not, we're not leaving tonight without a motion, so we've got the Boy Scout there, the Boy Scouts are here to show us how to make tents, so we can stay.
Your chairman, can I, can I, you know, frame something? Okay. Um, you know, I've expressed my, my skepticism, but on, but on the other hand, of course, I know everybody's searching around in the dark somehow, but how can we help business? And, and that's a reasonable thing to do in these times. I mean, what I would be tempted to say to the commission is, you know, we applaud your efforts in this regard, we think you're headed in the right direction generally with your feeling about this, but find something that's going to be of much greater benefit, you know, on a cost-benefit analysis thing, we just don't think that, if we're going to, if we're going to spend time and everything else trying to help businesses, maybe this just doesn't have enough benefit for whatever the perceived cost is, let's, let's go in a different direction, find something else that's going to be more beneficial.
And, so that, we would say, in the form of a motion, that would be, that we do not approve, we, we have decided not to approve what was presented to us by the staff, with that caveat, that we think that this is not the best idea, that we could put forth to help business and, and at the cost of what we think would help the, uh, the city, the county's, uh, overall ambience, I guess, or whatever.
My, I guess my motion is that, uh, I applaud their, their efforts to help business, we're behind that effort, we, we look at this with great skepticism and are not in favor of it, because it's our general consensus that we believe the benefit is very little and the cost ha, is real.
Second. We have a motion.
Okay, Jim.
And Jim seconded it, and we'll, we can read it over later, make sure it is correct, but I think the general feeling is...
Just to maintain basically the status quo, not adopt any changes.
Correct. Because, right, without it, there, there are no, this does not exist. Um, any other discussion on this before we go to vote? Because, I, I mean, I tend to, I personally will say, I tend to agree very much with what Sam said, I, I, we've had this back and forth, we had the same discussion ironically when the corridor problem, a, a problem, the corridor issue arose, the first time is with neon lights and with signs, signage in windows and certain, um, other signage, and, you know, remarkably, we've seemed to have done okay. It is tough, it is tough times, and I think any of us would bend over backwards for something economically in this town, I'd, but I tend to agree with Sam myself, so, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like, sign. Thank you, the, I guess, Stan, that y'all can tell the county commission, we appreciate what they did, but we don't like the idea. Now, the next item...
Not a problem. It is, I, you know, basically, the aesthetic costs are not worth the perceived business benefits.
Right, down the road. The, the next item in the, we would like to say goodnight to the Boy Scouts who are leaving, who I guess think that we are going home tonight after all. We're going home after all.
Bye, Charlie.
Um, the Boy Scouts need to go and get their homework done and go to bed. All right, the next item on the public hearing is the consideration of proposed amendments providing for temporary suspension of compliance and reg, with regulations not directly related to public safety. This has been something else that the commission asked us to look at. Stan?
That's correct, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ask him.
This too is kind of a economic development initiative from the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration. Um, the purpose of this amendment is to speed up the CO or Certificate of Occupancy process, as well as the Certificate of Completion process, that was actually something that was added in by the PSAC. Um, COs deal with commercial and multifamily site plan projects, certificates of completion deal with horizontal infrastructure, of subdivisions and PD projects. And the idea is to, with this proposed change, is to authorize the county administrator, and, um, it needs to go to a higher level, the Board of Adjustment, to grant temporary suspensions, and the idea is that, um, there might be, at the time, a developer's trying to get a certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion, minor non-safety-related discrepancies, um, and the idea is to go ahead and allow them to get that certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion, and give them a specified period of time, such as ninety days, to comply after the fact. Uh, and that might involve correcting something, or mitigating, somehow resolving the deficiencies and bringing it into compliance, and I just wanted to note here two things. One is that this first approach that I just described is the subject amendment, this is what you all are considering as well as advertised tonight, and that is a temporary suspension with eventual compliance, and the PSAC recommends that the board approve it, it's before you all this month in April, and we're looking to go to the Board of County Commissioners in May. Uh, and I mentioned this in our agenda item, uh, because there's an additional approach, not under consideration tonight, just to let you know, that the PSAC is still discussing, and it would go farther than this temporary suspension, it would actually loosen the criteria for permanent variances on a case-by-case basis, for more flexibility on development regulations, and, and not necessarily at the, at the CO end of the development process, but at, at the design level as well. Um, and just, and I'd mention that in, in our agenda item, just because that's, that additional approach might be something that comes before you all later, but tonight we're looking at the temporary suspension. Um, the CO process just, just generally involves two elements, one is the building itself, which must meet the building and fire codes, and the second is the site, the horizontal sort of work, and that has to meet the approved site plan and, and different, different codes that apply to the, to the site works, so to speak. And the CO is issued when the building and the site both meet all the requirements, and the CO is, is the hammer point. Right now, you have to have one hundred percent compliance before you can get the certificate of occupancy or CO. The steps for a CO, developer completes the site work, their project engineer or architect submits a substantial completion letter, and with respect to landscaping, the landscape architect or contractor submits a letter stating that, uh, what, that the landscaping they've installed meets our Florida number one or quality standard. Uh, at that point in time, planning manages this process, planning creates a CO request, and inspections are scheduled for these various departments. Code enforcement and current development, uh, the fire department, engineering, traffic engineering, utilities, uh, and environmental health occasionally has to do a site inspection. Each department makes their own inspection, creates a punch list of items, and the developer resolves each department's punch list, and when each department is signed off, um, when their punch list items are addressed, um, then it's allowed to proceed, and, uh, the, if the building is final, the CO is issued, and the CO is actually issued by the building department, and it covers the building and the, and the site improvements as well. Uh, the certificate of completion, CC process, is similar to the CO process, same type of certifications and inspections and punch list items and so forth, but there are a few differences, I just want to note, I don't think you all really ever really hear much about these, um, it's, there is no building or vertical construction involved with the certificate of completion, um, the process is actually managed by engineering and public works rather than planning, and the certificate is issued by engineering completely, and again, it's mostly infrastructure, but also can include required landscape buffers for subdivisions. Uh, the proposed changes are to allow COs and certificates of completion to be issued when there are minor non-safety-related punch list items, basically. Um, there's corrective action or mitigation that has to be performed by the developer, it has to be done within ninety days of the certificate, and the county administrator is authorized to grant the temporary suspension, um, because again, it might involve something from various departments, it doesn't fall under one department necessarily, what the discrepancy might be, it could be something that engineering, or traffic engineering, or planning and code enforcement, or it might be a combination. Uh, the Board of Adjustment, which is an, an existing board, uh, that doesn't meet very often, doesn't really need to, they, they grant setbacks variances essentially right now, um, they would be authorized under this amendment to hear appeals from the administrator's decisions, or the administrator could also refer an item to this board. Um, and again, if that board is convened, that obviously takes some time to do, it could take, I'd say probably ten days, two weeks, convene it, there is notice to surrounding property owners or adjacent property owners, so there's, there's a bit of process involved there. Uh, as structured, if there's no timely compliance, um, code enforcement would be initiated, and, uh, the, anything, future permits or COs in the project would be on hold until, until compliance was achieved. Just kind of a, uh, an analysis statement here from staff, if compliance becomes an issue, if we, we put this in place and kind of see how it works, uh, if, if it, if it turns out that we're having trouble getting compliance after the ninety days, then it'd be just our recommendation that we either add security requirements, which actually could be counterproductive in terms of stringing out the process, and, um, you know, might, might be more cost than benefit there, or just to, to revisit the issue entirely again, and see if it's not working, we might, uh, need to, need to repeal it. Um, but this is, uh, something that I think, you know, the Board of County Commissioners think there's a consensus to, to try this, um, whoops, I guess that was the last slide. Um, the, uh, the Professional Services Advisory Committee, again, has recommended that the Board of County Commissioners, uh, adopt the ordinance with a few changes that we made, so the version you all see, uh, here this evening is consistent with the PSAC's recommendation, um, and I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Um, any questions, but let me ask one quick question first, and then the questions of staff. Why the code of, the, the Board of Variance versus like code enforcement? And the Board of Variance doesn't meet very often, not to take anything away from, but the Board, the code enforcement is at least more up to date on a broader, much broader scale of land development rules than your code of variance, where now you're calling these things variances, and maybe, um, I, I don't understand exactly, but why the Board of Variance versus code enforcement, or something like code enforcement?
Yeah, I think the, the Board of Adjustment was recommended by, by the proponents of, of this change, uh, it's, it's an existing board that, I mean, it's already constituted to, to grant sort of waivers and variances, so I think that was, that was the thinking behind it.
And, and within your opinion, then how, how does, in the speeding up of the process, because the whole purpose here is not to hold back development, it's allowed to proceed if it wants to, to help stimulate our local economy, so we've got another economics question here, trade-off being reward of current hammer for a hammer down in ninety days is slightly more like a Nerf ball hammer, but the reality is, is that how much, how much speeding up, or in, in your, your all's professional opinion, how much does this change things?
Well, I think that most of the time, i- i- if this is going to be effective, it's, it's going to be effective at the staff or the administrator level, because that's going to be the quick turnaround.
Well, you have to make it effective, but I mean, if not...
No, but I'm, what I'm saying is that...
But does this truly speed up projects?
Well, it speeds up someone getting a CO.
And that's holding people off? I mean, I'm, I'm curious.
A hundred percent compliance would, as we do now, means that everything has to be correct on the site. If you have landscaping that doesn't meet a landscaping requirement, you've got to get, pull it out, get, get the correct in, if there are cracks in sidewalks, or things that are, you know, well, any, any number of things that the other departments look at that are not safety-related, um, what this would do with the...
So you don't have a timeframe?
Right.
All you're saying is this is easier to get your CO now?
If you're not in compliance.
Right, if you're not in compliance, that's right. In other words, it allows them to do some minor corrections after the CO.
You have an offer, you can go ask the administrator, okay, right.
And, and in staff's opinion, I mean, it, it makes sense that it will keep the process moving quicker if it's done at a staff or administrator level, well, once you have to convene the Board of Adjustment, that's a whole nother round, and it would really have to be something that, you know, really developer would be willing to, you know, kind of put things off for two weeks or whatever.
And you're, obviously, you proposed this, so you're comfortable with the Board of Variance over a code enforcement?
I mean, I think, yeah, I think the Board of Adjustment...
I don't think the code enforcement can meet quick enough, like we were talking about, code enforcement meets once a month, um, I just don't think they have the ability to turn around quickly to hold the change.
And, one thing, this isn't part of the code enforcement board's mission, the code enforcement board is...
I was trying, I'm just trying to clarify, because I'm, I'm just...
Won't it be part of their mission? Because their code enforcement's, they're going to have to go back and say, you're not, you're going to have to send inspectors out and say, you're not, you're still not in compliance.
They do that now, right?
But if...
Right.
It's going to add to that workload.
At the end of the ninety days, if the applicant hasn't complied, then it will be a code enforcement issue, and if it goes to the board, the board will have to make a decision whether or not there's a code violation.
But what are the types of, Bob, of, most normally, you get, uh, you're ready for a CO, but you need an extra sixty days or thirty days, or what are, what are the conditions normally that would, that we would see in this situation?
What we...
Landscaping all the time?
Landscaping is a big issue. What happens is you may have some trees that are a foot too short, two feet too short, you may have some trees that don't meet the Florida number one criteria, you may have hedges that, that aren't big enough, and right now, we, we usually deal with these in a number of ways. Um, we, either they can replace the material that's too short, or they can supplement, they can put in material that meets the criteria, and either use trees that don't meet the canopy tree requirement as meeting understory trees.
Before they get the CO?
Yeah, before it's getting the CO, there are options that they can do, but, but if they, and there are always punch list items, always, from every department, always, and like Stan said, some are cracked curbs from engineering, they, they may not have all of their...
I mean, but the driveway is not unpaved, it would be, may be cracked, I mean, it's not things like having, not having the, I mean, how big, I guess, part of this is trying to figure out how big an item are you really talking about?
And, and that's, yeah, and that's, as long as it's not health or safety, we're still, we're assuming this is all going to be punch list items, but I think this is when staff would not sign off on it, and it, I guess, would go to the Board of Adjustment if an applicant comes in and says, oh, by the way, I didn't put in any of my landscaping, but I want a CO.
Then they have ninety days, we, the county...
Yeah, if, if the county administrator agreed to do it, but that might be an occasion where he says, no, I don't want to do this, the Board of Adjustment would.
I took a look at this and read it very carefully, and I, this is unlike the last case, where I was convinced otherwise, I think this is act, these, these situations actually come up, where a local business has hired a developer to develop a thing, he has a grand opening, and because a tree or two, or something is cracked, he cannot open because you guys have to follow the rules, and that's, that's the way it is, and that is a very heavy burden for some, and it happens, it really does happen, and it's a very heavy burden for the business, and it can take a long time to work out, and a lot of, a lot of money can be lost that way. So I think there's a real benefit for this, but I read carefully through the way that it works, and I think that although the idea is good, I think just in terms of practical application, there's a few things that aren't right, and I think I, I just go through these quickly, if you'll allow me, Mr. Chairman, this is just based on my own, own experience with this, um, yeah, number one, the way it says right now is that it's the, uh, it's the county administrator that, that gets to do the waiver, and the county administrator's a very busy man, it really should reside, this authority with, with the county development coordinator, which is, you currently hold that position, you have twenty years of experience, you know as a practical matter whether or not someone should be granted the waiver or not, so that's my first, that's my first comment. To take it all the way up to that level, I think, is going to fill up that guy's inbox, and he doesn't, it's just too high. Number two, the decision, it should say in here, that the decision should be granted, whether to grant it or deny the request for a temporary CO, should be made within one or two business days, because all businesses know that government, you know, can, by not deciding, is making a decision, and, and so I think just as a practical matter, one or two business days, yes or no. If the developer, builder, whatever, does not like it, uh, because it's rejected, then he should be able to appeal it to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and there should be a thing that says that the Board of Zoning Adjustment must meet within, I'm going to say ten business days to consider the appeal. In any case, if a temporary CO is allowed, you know, what, either by you as the community director, or by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they have ninety days to comply, and if they don't, then it's a code enforcement action, and I believe that code enforcement does have enough teeth to really make, to, you know, to whip their head around and, and make sure that they, that they comply. So I think if it were structured that way, it makes a lot of sense, it's, it's got real benefit to the business community, it's got the checks and balances, the power resides with the people who have the judgment to be able to make the decision, and it's just a real practical way, it's just, it just makes a lot of sense to me, but there's some changes that need to be made to this ordinance.
Great, thank you, Sam. Any other comments of staff?
May I address one of your comments? I, I think they're really good, I think one reason why I had the county administrators, because why Bob has expertise on certificate of completions, uh, the certificate of occupancy, uh, those types of checklists are handled by engineers, isn't that correct, Bob? And so that's why, you know, on that side of the equation, it's more of public works that has expertise, so I think that's why they went to the county administrator as being the person who signs off, because he can seek guidance from both Bob, if it's a CC, and, uh, maybe Jim Davis, if it's a, um...
Well, Sam touched on exactly, I mean, the reason I asked about the Board of Variance is just, it's not, it's nothing against the board, but they, they meet once a year, and they deal in setbacks, so they don't, they're not exposed to a wide range of the issues. I, I tend to agree with what he said, if you've got it with someone that, that deals with this all the time, you know, they, the, if you want a common sense government and something moving, you deal with the people that, that deal with it quickly, instead of having it laying in the lap of someone else. Now, you know, Joe is certainly higher up in the, kind of the final say in the county, but I, I would tend to think Sam has a good, good point.
Well, then why don't we make the appeal to, to Joe's...
Well, then why don't we make the appeal to Joe's office? Keating has approval and Baird has appeal.
Well, I think they want it to group publicly. They want it to something else.
And if, if the county administrator doesn't approve it, then he takes it before the Board of County Commissioners.
I honestly think as a practical matter, that Bob or anybody, I mean, it would be their very job description to be able to make these kinds of calls all day long. I don't even think it's going to be that close. But if it were something that we're, we're going to be close, I feel certain that he...
Nobody likes him anyway.
That he was, that he was...
He's in the position to be unbiased.
Yeah, as a practical matter, he probably would consult Joe. I mean, if it was something that were a close call. And, and the Board of Zoning Adjustment, I mean, it is their very definition of their job to consider, you know, things that are a little out of the normal code. So they, I think they're a reasonable place to go through, go to for the appeal, but it has to be within a specified period of time.
Specified time, okay.
There's one other thing, and this is unrelated to exactly this, but very important. When we're talking about COs, that's different from CC. A CC is, if you can imagine, if someone's doing a subdivision and the developer's building the subdivision, building homes within that subdivision and selling them. And the problem with the way that this current ordinance is written is that there could be a situation, yeah, I mean, very much so, where, where the developer has trees, you know, in the back quadrant of his 40 acre development that are below, you know, 10 feet or below 12 feet, they're nine feet, and someone literally would not be able to get, someone who bought a house...
Can't get a, not done.
And not get a certificate of occupancy to move into that house. Now, they're moving out of their apartment, they got three kids, they're closing tomorrow, and guess what? Because the developer...
And they don't care if there's dirt in the front yard.
Yeah, I mean, that's punishing the wrong person. So we need to just, I would recommend that staff go back and find a way to be able to apply, you know, pressure to the people who need to, the pressure needs to be applied on. Don't punish the homeowner in this CC thing. I, I don't have the solution to that. I'm just saying that's something that, we don't want that result. We don't want that result.
I have a question on that. Could somebody actually get a building permit before the subdivision had the CC?
Yes, you can get final plat approval with a contract for construction to finish out the last 25% of improvements. So you can get a building permit when you get your final plat approval.
And you don't want to change that.
Right. And, and, but that's limited by not being able to get a CO until there's a certificate of completion.
And also for planned developments, one of the kind of incentives that's built into the system is to allow building permits to be issued before, even before the final plat, even if you don't bond it out, they, they get kind of, they can get a jump on things. And I think there's a couple of ways, Mr. Zimmerman brings up a good point. A couple of things I think would could happen practically. One would be certificates of completion sometimes are actually phased, so you might have, you know, part of a project that's not issued a certificate of completion. But other than that, I think if you wanted to avoid the type of situation that he mentions, I think you would disqualify that type of project from getting this temporary suspension for a CC. If they have an end user under contract or closed and they've got vertical construction, if, if you know that situation is there and is possible, don't grant the temporary suspension to begin with. Make it a, make it a, not, not available in that type of situation, if you want to avoid that situation. Because the CO, the CO hammer, I think is, I mean, it's very, it works and it motivates. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that you take it out for CCs. I would just say, if, if you can set up criteria to not get in that situation, then, you know, don't give it to that type of project.
Okay.
Something tells me you've had experience in this and, and situations that have proven the require, the need to have that hammer.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you may have any other questions, staff?
I think this is a good, a good concession to make in the time. And actually, if it continued, I really wouldn't have a problem with that, because I don't think that something that's not really significant, when you have a large construction, should cause someone not to be able to, to go ahead with it and, and get the CO. I wouldn't have a problem with that in the future, instead of going back after so many days. I do think though, that it should work on both ends. And that is if these concessions are made for development and for the project, whatever it may be, that the fine at the end of that 90 days be way up there. So that there's not a consideration that, yeah, I'm going to go ahead and do this and then I'll get to 100 days and, or 90 days and it'll be 100 bucks a day, so that means I can go on for another 10 or 20 days. I think it should be significant enough that there's a real commitment on the part of the entity to make sure that in that 90 days, everything's taken care of.
And I think that the, the code enforcement board can take that, I mean, they have some latitude and with respect to the amount of the fine, and I think they would take the facts into account on that. You know, if there's a non-compliance issue that gets, gets in front of them, they can take those facts into account.
It is to a set amount, isn't there going to be a set amount?
There's a range.
I think it's up to $500 a day for first time offense.
Up to.
Right, up to.
You do that for a few days and you start talking about, in some of these cases, some money, you begin to, you get their attention.
But is it going to happen? If, if we've got the pressure to change our LDRs, to loosen them, then isn't the pressure going to be, well, is it supposed to be a 12-foot tree and they planted a nine-foot tree? It's going to grow. It's going to take it eight or 10 years, but it's going to grow. And I think that that's the wrong way to look at this. That, that, what that is, is you have a landscaper, and I've been in the business, I'm very aware of this, has a contract, either verbal or written, to provide a 12-foot tree as specified in the county plan. And that sub delivers a short tree. That's fraud. So we're going to give them 90 days, it's going to go to court. You can, you know, they should be, they should be there. It's easy to measure a tree to know.
Well, I think what has happened, Genz, from what I've heard, is that they make them take them out, or they call it an undersory, understory, story tree, and they have to put in the right 12-foot tree, and they don't have to pull the other one, but they...
Leave the other one.
I mean, I think that, I think that we deal with that every day with code enforcement, with, with CO or not. I don't, 90 days isn't going to change that, then, as far as I can see.
And we're not talking about what Jen's suggesting, are we? We're talking about a 12-foot tree, after 90 days, it's a 12-foot tree.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I think what he was bringing out, I mean, this is also part of the discussion. If, if, if you have certain problem areas, problem areas with, with the ordinance, do you just change the standard? Or by granting, you know, temporary, temporary suspension, you know, are you, are you creating a new standard? I think the way that this is written for this approach, you're not doing that if compliance is required at the end of 90 days.
That, I agree with that.
If you can guarantee me that compliance is going to be at 90 days or a really hefty fine, otherwise, I just see that it's, like, like Gene said about, about signs, they're going to have the biggest gaudiest signs they can. They're going to put in the least amount that they can, if you let them get away with it.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, I was wondering if Jen's is recommending that maybe in an instance like this, that we specify that if you do not comply within that 90-day timeframe, it is a $1,000 a day fine, regardless of...
I think whatever the max, well, 162 you need to...
We have, we have code enforcement procedures and, and they're charged with determining violations of our code.
But this isn't, this is pertaining specifically to the temporary suspension of land development regulations, being in compliance in 90 days. Can you not say, if you got, if you got your CO based on this, you have a $500 a day fine?
I really think it's up to the code enforcement board, that's what they're charged with in determining violations of the code and determining what to bring into compliance the violation.
What can happen, I, I know the, understand the feeling, but what can happen is that one guy may have, let's say, 10 trees and one guy has one tree and, you know, now we, we, I think if you're going to let this go and change it and you have to trust that it's whoever it is, it's Joe Baird or, or Bob Keating and the Board of Variance, the whole purpose of this was to bring what I guess Wesley said as common sense. You've got to rely on common sense. And if, hopefully, they will make it work and make it happen. The idea here is not to fine people. The idea here is to get the COs in place and people moving into homes or into whatever they can and not having stumbling blocks, small stumbling blocks. It's to loosen it in that regard, is what I think. So I, I like what Sam has said myself, but before we go any further, I need to open the public hearing unless we've got some more comments up here.
If, if it's okay, George. I'm skeptical about the ability to legislate common sense. But I'm, one of many concerns I have has to do with the mechanism that we're contemplating, putting in place and whether or not it's, yes, it may kick out a CO or a CC quickly, but in terms of staff time...
Yes.
And ongoing county involvement, the process to completion, to successful compliance, may end up being more cumbersome and more costly to the taxpayers. And that's, that's a concern that I...
Sam, you or Bob care to comment on that?
I'll start. And Bob can correct anything. I don't think from a staff, if it stays at the staff level, the decision, I don't think there's extra cost to staff.
You're doing it anyway, I guess.
Well, and, and as I think Bob alluded to, there usually, it's usual that you'd have multiple inspections anyway. So instead of the second or third inspection, where we go back out after 90 days, I mean, I think, you know, maybe we would be doing the same inspection just, just later at, in time.
You're re-inspecting anyway, and there are re-inspection fees, right?
That's exactly right.
There's re-inspection fees. Every time you have to go back out there, there's another re-inspection fee levied, is that correct?
Actually, I think it's after three.
Okay. But, but you're not adding an extra trip.
Right. I don't believe that would be a cost to the county. If it goes to the Board of Adjustment, there would definitely be more staff time and, and costs, as well as notice to adjacent property owners. So I think that that, right, right now, there's a, there's a fee for variances to the Board of Adjustment, but there's no fee proposed with this.
So we have a...
And so there would be, if, if they, you know, however many wind up having to go to another board, there would, there would definitely be more staff time for that case.
So there's going to be additional workload for an administrative assistant to handle this?
Well, it's a public meeting, there are minutes, there's, there's staff report, there's, you know, staff time. So, yeah, any, you know, when you have more board meetings, there would be more staff time.
I, I think that, to the extent that many of these issues involve landscaping and, and chapter 926 is enormously complicated to put together, I, in my own simple-minded kind of response to this, I could well imagine just revisiting chapter 926 and making amend, making some amendments to the, to, Jen's may disagree with this, I think he probably, I might be more inclined to look at modifications to the standards in a, in a way that would, for example, in size, in size thresholds, instead of having an absolute cutoff, have a range that would be acceptable. Have some way to give the person in the field a little bit more flexibility so that these situations where, you know, it's 28 inches instead of 30 and, and you can't move in goes away without having to implement a more cumbersome process.
Well, I think you're going to need, I think the process is more than just landscaping. I mean, I think there are other criteria that they have to fix. And that's the dilemma. I mean, I'm, my concern was the Board of Variance just, say, knowing the rules and that's unfair to them, but I, I don't...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not convinced that...
But the reality is, is code enforcement is involved anyway, so.
I want to go back a step. I think what I hear from some people is that the presumption is that a lot of the people that are trying to build these buildings and get them CO'd and operate businesses that support families are trying to take advantage of the system or game the system. And the reality is that that is simply not the truth. I'm not saying there aren't some people like that. They, they're, unfortunately, they're in our society at all different levels, not just business. But there are clearly instances, and you've heard that from staff tonight, where someone who has done, you know, invested multi-millions of dollars and employed many, many people, and there's a store opening or a house or whatever it may be. And those are complex productions. And to think that at the very end of that, something that is ultimately de minimis, which is to be judged in the great judgment of, of, I would recommend, the community development director, to think that something that is de minimis, which is what we're talking about here, would, would be the end of that venture for some period of time, you know? Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't go back and revisit the LDRs, maybe we should do that as well, but this is a separate issue.
Right.
I, I think I just heard staff say that, in a practical matter, there would not be any more trips and only in the case of if a developer or a local business did not like the judgment of the community development director in his rejection of a temporary CO. Then if a request were made that it go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, then, yeah, there may be some additional administrative time put into it. So that might be the cost. But I'm telling you, the benefit is real, and the benefit is not to evil greedy people. Benefit by and large is to our friends and neighbors who are trying to do their best here and are getting caught up at the end with a very small thing that is, has very tremendous and real expenses and happens. It happens, it's real, it's practical. And this is common sense.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Anybody else have any other comments?
I have a question of staff. If you, let's, and I agree with Mr. Zimmerman, I really think we should have the community development director be the person. Because you're, you know, if it's a common sense thing, Bob's got more common sense than most everybody else. So I think Bob would be very, very...
We better write that down, too.
Well, okay. I need to take that back, I think.
Actually, thanks. Last week I was...
You're still a socialist, so...
No, last week someone said I was more than confident, so this is two, two, two good things.
You may actually have longevity in this job, Bob.
After 23 years.
All right, so now, now let's say Bob says, look, I'm just not giving you a temporary suspension of, of the ordinances. And they have to go before the Board of Zoning Adjustments. How long does it take to get the Board of Zoning Adjustments together and, and to get this organized and to, to reserve a room and have this all come together?
Yeah, what, 10 business days, I think, is...
That's what I would recommend.
And, and that would work, but...
Because justice delayed is justice denied. I mean, you know, you can't spread them out.
What Sam says, if we're going to do with it, you deal with it.
If you're going to do with it, you know, it's got to be within a reasonable period of time.
So would you say it would be, it would be easier just to have the appeal go to the county administrator? I mean, that could be on a, on a next same day basis, almost.
Well, I think most people would think that if the county administrator in his judgment just deems that this is serious enough that he's not going to issue a temporary CO and someone truly disagrees with them and wants to appeal it, that it probably should go to some kind of representative board. That would just be my feeling. And the Board of Zoning Adjustment, you know, these are just the kinds of types of...
They're still a point.
They're constituted to deal with this type of, this type of question of, of variance from the norm. That's, that's just why I think it's appropriate. I don't know.
Okay, do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
Not till I open the public hearing.
Oh, shoot.
We're not going anywhere for a while.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one thing? I hear this 10-day limit. I know the way the ordinance is currently proposed talks about at least seven days prior to the hearing, providing written notice to surrounding neighbor, neighbors. I don't see how we can work that. If you only have 10 days to set up a hearing, I don't see how you're going to provide potentially this written notice.
Right.
Because, I mean, even if it takes two days in the middle, that means that very day that you get the notice, you have to then turn around and pick the room, assign the time.
Sure.
So either one of two things, either we need to strengthen...
I think his point, I think his point is there's, within reason, as quick a turnaround as possible. It's two weeks, fourteen, he means two weeks.
Fourteen days, right. It's whatever's practical from the point of, I mean, we got to rework some numbers, and I, maybe, you know, Stan has...
His point is very simple. If you're going with this, that you turn it around...
Make it work.
Make it work has to happen quickly. That's the whole purpose in here.
And I think we could, I mean, actually...
And put that in writing, so it has to happen quickly, not just feeling it's going to happen quickly.
Just saying, make it practical, make it work, have it make sense, that's all. If you need more time, okay.
We'll fill in a different blank.
Something that works.
Right. Okay. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I think there's several dozen people out here who want to speak. Then again, it may only be Charlie over here by himself waving and flapping his arms. Charlie, you may, you may have the podium, but if you'll give your name and address, then we'd appreciate it.
Charlie Wilson, 1057 Sixth Avenue. This is a good example of the frustration. Thank you all for your service and being here this evening. And this may take a while, because, you know what, you've just had a thirty-minute conversation with staff, back and forth about the lies and the wherefore of this particular proposal. And you haven't heard one word from the people who made the proposal. In fact, it's the County Commission who made the proposal. And so what I'd really like to do is now, after having heart failure out there for the last thirty minutes, because the staff are, they're wonderful, they're my friends, but they are dead-set against this. And yet, the County Commission has directed that we take this up. So I'm here, what you need to do is, I'd like to re-rack, and now we have to go back thirty minutes, because about half of the things that y'all asked the questions about, and about half of the things that you had worries about, aren't there. So if I can start from zero...
The good news is, you can address them all, since you've heard most of them, Charlie.
Well, no, because then we'll close, and then I'll have to sit down, and then y'all talk to the staff again, and you'll be able to talk to yourself, and I will be able to answer the questions.
Okay, we'll give it your best shot.
So this is my, this is my only chance, and I have to trust everybody to, I don't even know where to start, it's so frustrating. Here's where it happened. Getting a CO in Indian River County is a nightmare. The thought that Indian River County is anti-business makes everybody angry, and the commissioners all say, "No, it's not," but it is. And one of the reasons is because of our CO process. Now, in this, right now, the way the process is, is the greatest thing you can do is never give a CO. If you never give a CO for the rest of your life, then you're not going to have any problems because of written one out there. So the philosophy by the Board of County Commissioners was this. We were trying to work on an economic development plan, and that economic development plan started with something called RIGHT. And the R for RIGHT stood for government reform. I think if you ask businesses, if you ask the public, if you ask people, government reform is one of the highest priorities we have. Now, so we were trying to figure out, how is it, how is it that we can get this to work? So the first thing that was thought of by the Commission, and I, Commissioner Davis talked to me about this at great length, and we went before the County Commission, the County Commission voted to send this to you. Now, what was proposed by Commissioner Davis, and what is before you, are two completely different things. They're very watered-down versions of what the Commission requested. This went then before Professional Services, and that was brought up. Professional Services sent the staff back and said, "This doesn't go far enough. We want a stronger provision." And that's why now they're coming, there's another one coming down the pike that's going to be a stronger version of what you have here. Because there are difficulties, and there are problems, and this is a good solution. Now, let me try to start from the beginning. And that is, why the Board of Adjustments? Why the Value Board of Adjustments? We chose that as a framework because it has been set up since the nineteen-seventies. It has certain legislative and legal abilities, including the ability to be a Board of Last Resort, or a Board of Final Decision, so that they can make a final decision. So the idea was that this board is made up of five people. These five people are appointed one by each Commissioner, so they would be representative. It's not like a gum punch, people don't know what they're doing. This is a representative of each of the County Commissioners. One of the other good things about this framework of this board was, is that the board has regular meetings, quarterly or whenever they say, but they also have the ability to be called by the Chair within seven days. So the idea, they also don't have to be all five there, only three of them have to be there to make a quorum, so that you can have a decision quickly. The other thing is, is that the Chairman then has discretion, so there's all these safety things. So let's say you get to a CO, and you're standing out there, and the actual fact of a CO is, the bank is sending you your first payment notice, your employees are waiting in the front yard, the trucks are waiting to get there, and, believe me, you're standing in a trailer, listening to your landscaping person argue with the code enforcement person, and you're standing there trying to get these people to work. And you, if the staff member that was standing there asked you to jump off the barber bridge, you'd probably do it. Because there is no appeal, there is no anything that can get that CO. Now, there are several examples of this, and we all know some of the nightmare scenarios. I can probably give you half a dozen of them. But, so we wanted to solve that problem. And the way we solve that problem is with this board. Because there's a couple of other things in this board. One is, is that the notification to residents are the, I understand, the contiguous residents. So we're not talking about ten thousand, we're talking about six. And one of the things that the County Commission required, Commissioner Wheeler particularly, was that he didn't want permanence. He didn't want a board that could be done, that could all of a sudden change the zoning, you know, or what the building looked like or anything. So he wanted something that didn't allow permanence immediately. So we built into the system a means by, let's say, the CO is happening there, and there's a disagreement between the staff and the engineer, as an example. They would then have an option to be able to go and say, "Well, I appealed to this board, and it'll take seven, ten days, whatever it's going to be," but a very short period, it's actually a very short period of time. And then, if they come before the board, and let's say the board says, "Yeah, you know what, this is a real problem. This is unique to this piece of property. Yeah, it says, you know, it has to be seven feet tall, but if it does, it's going to hit that electric pole." There are things that happen. There is no perfect ordinance. Then, at the same time that this ninety days is taking place, this board communicates with the County Commission, and it goes on the County Commission agenda, and it says, "Commissioners, we have heard seventeen of these, and there's a problem because it keeps coming up over and over and over again. We suggest that you look at permanently changing this committee, or this particular code." So not only does it give us a safety zone, or a safety outlet for a business that's just trying to get in business and trying to employ people, and is, is, because there's some specifics in here about being, it has to be within the intent of the law, with the intent of the code, and that it's unique, there's all kinds of criteria in here for this. But it's very carefully set up, so that then the County Commission can then, at the same time, while this ninety days is going on, the County Commission can then look at that and consider whether they want to make it a permanent waiver. It's not this board that's making the permanent waiver, but it allows the County Commission, in a very unique circumstance, to be able to make a permanent waiver. So there are, there are several criteria that we originally intended, and that, but that's not what's, that's not what's coming for you, and that's why, that's why it's difficult when you're, because half of you have already made your decision, because half of you have already talked to the staff, and you've already, and you, and you, you know, you're like Dr. Hogg, it's skeptical already, it's hard to come up here and say, when you got to start over again, that, you know, there are safeguards in here. Now, why doesn't it go to Mr. Keating? First of all, it has multiple departments. Some of them are Mr. Keating's departments. There's signed ordinances, the signee you just passed, as an example.
Charlie, let me interrupt you for a second, because I wouldn't, since that's a specific item up here. If you heard what we said, is that we don't think, we think Joe understands the rules, but Bob Keating understands the rules, all the rules, better than Joe. It's the other way of putting that, and so it doesn't matter that it's different departments, because his department creates the rules that all the other departments meet.
Well, actually...
And I think that's the, that was our simple statement, okay? So how would you address that?
Okay. First of all, the actual person probably understands it better as Dorya Roy, because, you know, she's had, she's the one that has to walk through. First of all, it was the County Commission's direction, that the Administrator do it.
You just heard us give back the County Commission's direction on the first project we had up here today, so we can do that again, too.
But their purpose for that was, there's a, was number one, is you can't delegate legislative authority. Number two is, they wanted to take very tight control of it. I'll get to that in a second. Very complicated, I'll get to that in a second. But they chose that Joe Baird should be the one to do the sign-offs. Now, and that's part of the whole plan, and here's why. It starts with code enforcement officer right there. Code enforcement officer has to say to the applicant, "Nope, I'm not giving you a CO because that sidewalk is broken."
Okay.
Then, the guy has to say, "You know, I don't think that's right." So it then goes to Bob Keating, and Bob Keating can look at his staff member and say, "You know, maybe you're not right," and then, before anything else happens. So that's internal, that happens with the inspectors and everything. So, but let's say Bob Keating says, "No, I'm not giving a temporary CO," for any number of reasons, and all of them uncertain good, you know, he's great at his job. But then this applicant then has the, says, "You know, I just, I just don't think that's right. I don't think, it's right for planning, but it's not right for the good and welfare of the community." So he has a chance to go to Joe Baird and say, "Joe Baird, I really need to get this started." Now, the other part of this, it's not fair to staff to have them be hammered, let's say you're in a huge business getting ready to start, you've got two hundred employees out there waiting, you can't have a staff member...
And two hundred employees waiting, and you go into an appeal for seven days, they're going home anyway, so it's kind of a mute point.
I know you're getting angry with me, but...
I'm not, Charlie, but I am getting a little frustrated, because you're, I ask about Joe, let me just say, clarify something. Is it in your opinion, then, based on what we were thinking, and I agreed with Sam about, that because whoever code enforcement is, or the engineer with Public Works, or someone else with Utilities, or whoever, has to answer to one of those department heads first, anyway, before something goes to Joe Baird as an appeal? So the process is from their person to the head of that department, whoever it may be, Jim Davis, Bob Keating, or whatever, so the input from those guys is direct.
That are...
Then it ends up with Joe Baird, then, you know, I mean, that's a flow at least I can understand. To appeal directly to Joe, and it seemingly bypassed, the way this is written, everybody, wasn't, you know, not us necessarily unfair to anybody, because Joe's in charge of, he's the last buck, stops here, but the question here had to do with rules, and that's why we're focused on the Department of Rules, and that was why we brought it up, I think.
I will try to be more succinct. And I'm still calming down from having to, so yes, it is already, before it even goes into any of this system, it's already, they've already tried to, I mean, everybody's tried to get a CO, asks to go to Bob Keating if they're unhappy. I mean, somebody has to go, so they already do that. So assuming that they're going to stay unhappy, the next step takes place, which is they ask Joe Baird. Now, the problem that the Commission saw, and the problem that I see, frankly, is political. You know, if you have, if you have people out there, they're trying to get something done, the staff has, looking at a code, they have no leeway to decide whether that code is going to happen or not. They have to do the code, even if they thought it was the silliest situation that they ever saw in their whole life. They have to follow that code. So the Commission wanted a...
Can I just jump in there, because I want to be clear with what, because I agree. Right now, Mr. Keating has no authority whatsoever to say, although you do not technically meet the code because your tree's not too tall, and that's the example we keep using. He has no authority to do that.
That's right.
Even though he's the most knowledgeable man about these things in the county, I think all we're suggesting is that maybe we should give him the authority to be able to make that decision. And if the person who is asking him to waive the most stringent things because the cost is so much more than the benefit, you know, if he doesn't like that decision, then he can go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Let me inter...
Why is that? I'm not, I'm not sure why you're...
Sam, let me ask a quick question, because Bob, when we have, when this comes up, and the CO, we're thinking a code of, the Board of Enforcement Group here, which are under your department, I mean, are there the inspector on Building Department that would not necessarily answer to you or to someone else? Would there be another inspector out there that doesn't necessarily, that could be hold it, to hold up, so in essence, they're coming back to you, and you're, and it's a department that in theory you don't...
Actually, building inspectors report to me, too. But there are. Engineering inspectors don't report to me. Utility inspectors don't, environmental health inspectors don't.
So the different, like, safety guys, things that were not likely to be temporary CO issues, correct?
Well, some of the engineering is, like we talked about, the cracked curb, or things like that.
All right. Business politics being what it is, so then, in lieu of having people in other departments being answering to him, even though he knows the rules, you, we've gone to the top and said, "We're going to the top guy," and that's how it's going to happen. And, okay, I mean, I, at least I understand the concept now.
I'm sorry I'm such a poor presenter.
No, I just think that it's not clear about some of the stuff that are in here, but...
So after that, so Joe Baird, then it goes before Joe Baird, and Joe Baird has the authority to grant something temporarily, and then communicate with the, he has to communicate to the County Commission why he did that. So he can't just write them off, he has to communicate to the County Commission why he did that. So then, if they disagree with Joe Baird, Joe Baird says, "No, I'm not giving it to you." That's when they can petition to the Chairman of the Board of Variants. It is not until then, until he has exhausted all these things, that he actually gets this...
Well, now, wait a minute, see, that's a little unclear to me on the flow of this, because you're talking about timing, and compared to what we've, at least, kind of were talking about, the timing to me has gone, is a little longer. So Joe Baird then has to come to the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners?
No. He has to report that he did it. See, by giving them...
But he can go to the Board of Variants, send them to the Board of Variants for an appeal, or someone can go to the appeal before he tells the County Commission what he's done.
If he declines, if he says, "Fine, you've got a ninety-day, then they've got ninety days to solve the problem." But if he doesn't decline, so so far, all the things that we've said so far take about six hours. I mean, we're in one, we're still in day one. When you're sitting there working the CO, and you're trying to get this done, and talk to the inspector, and the inspector says, "No," and you call up Bob Keating, and Bob Keating says, "No," and you call up Joe Baird, and he says, "Gosh, I'm not going to touch this with a tentacle," you're still in day one.
Unless it started at four o'clock.
Which, which often it happens. So, so let me go through.
Go ahead.
I'm still on question one, which is why we picked this Board of Variants. And the Board of Variants, for instance, the Chairman right now is Chris Marine. He's a local attorney, fine fellow, and his position before the Commission, he's the one that helped petition the County Commission for this, was, "I know the difference between someone who's gaming the system and someone who just is caught in a unique circumstance." And I'll get to that in a second, which, because there's a definition for what goes before this. That Chairman has the ability to say, "I will call the board, or I will not call the board." See? So it's gone all through all these steps in literally a day. And then, if it is, what we have reached is an impasse. If we have found that we have reached an impasse right there, that's when it goes, trips into the six or seven days. Now, while that temporary, let's say the board meets, or if Joe gives, or somebody else gives, see, Bob Keating doesn't have the ability to give a ninety-day waiver right now, or a temporary CO. So let's say that's given, that ninety days. Now, during that ninety days, he can go do all the cures he has to do, or he can petition the County Commission to be able to cure this. So the question of time, the question of time, this does shorten by a great amount the time that takes to handle a crisis, because what would his position be otherwise? You know, if you have a disagreement with staff about any zoning issue at any time, you always have somebody to appeal to. You have somebody, you have yourself, you have some other board to appeal to, except this one time, and that is when you're trying to get a CO. When you're trying to get a CO, you are hostage to whoever you're sitting across from. And, and not only, not only, it's not just that they're, I'm not accusing the staff of holding people hostage, but it's not fair to the staff either, because the staff are sitting there going, they've got, I, believe me, they've got one person standing over their shoulder, "We've got to get these people to work." And they've got another person standing over their shoulder, who could be a competitor, by the way, saying, "If you give them a break, I'm suing you."
Charlie, I, here's what I think about this. I'm on the same side as most of the people who dreamt this up. I want something that just works. I think the way, what you, I agree with you that there's a problem, okay? But this, the process that you just described to me, and I'm a developer, okay, by way of full disclosure, is far more complex and scary, and I would have to be digging into a book to figure out how to get through it. I just want to go to the head of Community Development, who gives me my CO, and say, "Hey, can I have a waiver here?" And if he's being unreasonable, I just want to have, within ten days, then be able to go to a Board of Zoning Adjustment...
Somebody, and I'm over the top.
...of citizens and say, "Here's my problem, can you solve it for me?" I mean, you're talking about, okay, first, you're talking about all in six hours, that I'm going to be able to get ahold of one guy, explain it to him, get ahold of his boss, explain it to him, then it's going to go to the County Commission, and then, I mean, that doesn't, that sounds to me like a lot more government and bureaucracy, and that ain't helping me as a developer, or as a businessperson. That, I mean, it would take me a day just to figure out what that process is.
Commissioner Zimmerman, if you've been around here on a day when somebody's trying to get a CO on a Friday, you will see that they're going from department to department, they have to go here, they take the piece of paper over here, Joe Smith is out, and won't be in, he leaves at three o'clock, he won't be in until Monday. It is, it is a nightmare.
Right, right, but you're adding even more, you're adding even more people. I'm saying, this is the guy. Have him decide.
Well...
If you don't like it, then it goes to the Board of Zoning Adjustment, it has to go within a certain period of time, as soon as is reasonably possible. Why does it have to go to Joe Baird? as reasonably possible. Why does it have to go to Joe Baird? Why does it have to go to all these in-between, why does it have to go to the, I mean, do you think that the, that the Board of County Commissioners want to be, you know, kept up to date in their email box about, about, you know, whether, about COs and sizes of trees and things like that? I, I don't know. I mean, that, that sounds like, that sounds like more bureaucracy, and much clunkier decision-making than just getting an answer in the office from the man who knows the answer.
Well, it, it does now, but here's, here's, if I, I am having difficulty explaining this, which I, which I, I don't kill the, the message, because I'm, I'm unable to, to, to dis-
Let's, let's let him finish, because I, I think that we're all trying to really be on your side, but I think that, but go ahead, let's keep going.
I'm listening, I'm listening to the details.
I know I'm doing this, this poorly, but frankly, the, the, the whole question was, why did we choose the Board of Zoning and, and Variants? And here's-
No, 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 the question starts with Joe Baird first, instead of the community development director.
Okay. The, the answer to that was, during the county commission meeting, Joe Baird volunteered to do it, and the commissioners, in order for them to have some feeling of confidence that it was going through the process and not being, not being short, that the commissioners specifically told Joe Baird that he was going to be doing this.
Let me offer, let me offer an answer to this, because I think that, in my own opinion, this is the best I can say, because I think, I don't want to get hung up forever on, on Joe, or whatever, but I think that there is a possibility they considered, firstly, said volunteer, secondly, there's a political issue if, within departments, if, if other people answer to other people, maybe they can't, they funnel up through their own heads, and then you go to the top dog, rather than having other people in departments funneling back to the community development director. I don't have a problem with that, I just, I mean, the whole, and just so, with the premise is clear, I think the premise here is that we under, not, here believe that maybe he knows the rules and the issues, even the broader sense, better than most, but I understand that if that's the case, that's why Joe was chosen. So, we'll leave it at that, if that's all right, and move on from there.
More than likely, Joe's gonna ask it.
The Board of Variants, the way you just explained the Board of Variants, and you go into specifics, is that they deal with smaller issues, variance, and they're there, but, you know, they haven't met five times a year, they've only met once a year, and our concern simply was not them as a board, it was, what we said was the same thing on knowledge of the broad issues, but if they're covered, I don't think that, that we, I don't know that that's as big a problem as, you, because that's a board, that's the one they answer to. We don't, they don't need to come to us.
Yes, sir, and they're all gonna be appointed, their new, new members are appointed. There's, there's four vacancies on the board, and they're, the board actually will be reconstituted with a different function. Their function actually was done, as Chris Marine explained, their function was done because they were able to meet and, and recommend changes to the county commission. County commission made the proper changes, now they don't have to meet anymore. So, all we're asking is that they, we do the same thing with codes that we used to do with variances. If, if I may, I, I want to-
They have, they have the ability to be off the public record, in the sense they can call their own board meetings, they can call them quickly. What you're, have suggested is that the chairman of that Board of Variants would have the right to say yea or nay on an appeal. Now, I, I think that, is that at issue with the ordinance as presented today? It, it sounds like, I mean, the issue to us was, is that the, at issue with our discussion was Joe Baird versus Bob, and we explained why, and that's something probably that would be considered later. Whether it's the Board of Variants, I think that, that most people, comfort level with the use of the Board of Variants, I don't think was a problem, one way or the other. I think that there was a problem, there was some concern about the issues, how broad or big, or how big the toe-
And the timing.
And the ti, and there was an issue on timing that we were trying to deal with, so-
George, let me ask a question. I'm getting, I'm getting lost here. I'm gonna try to find my way. In going through this in the first 30 minutes, just talking about, Charlie, I thought what we were trying to discern was that there are some minor issues, punch lists, we use trees all the time as an example. There are some minor issues associated with this development, whatever it may be, and they can't get the CO because these minor things are standing in their way. They come in, and if this is passed by the commission, then somebody is gonna be involved, perhaps Bob, and he says, "Okay, you can have 90 days." Most of the time, that seems, that's what would happen, but we're spending an unordained amount of time discussing something that Bob would say, "No, that's too major an issue. Even, even though it's not life safety, this is too major an issue, and I, I just can't give you this extra 90 days." In that instance, which to me seems like it wouldn't happen very often at all to assist these developers, we're getting sidetracked with the hierarchy of how this thing occurs or works in those few instances.
That's why, I would like to have explained that at the beginning, where, where we, but we don't believe that this committee will have to meet very often, specifically because of its existence. Its existence alone will allow the staff to know that they are gonna be able to make reasonable changes, that it is only, more than likely, it is simply a safety valve. This is a, this is like a safety valve on a cooker, that it is, it is, only one in 50 things are gonna go to this particular board. So, it gives the staff cover. But, but in, in another way, again, in no other situation do you not have an appeal of staff, and, and it's not just Bob Keating, we're concentrating on Bob Keating. What happens if you're out there on the road with a road engineer who's saying, "Okay, you've got a crack here, and you're gonna have to do concrete from here until, you know, five blocks from here." You know, and believe me, it's happened. So, so there has to be some, we, we, the, the commission decided that there has to be some sort of process that keeps outlandish things from happening. And, and that's why we're here. We're not here for conflict, we're not here for whose department is doing what to whose, it's just, it's just, that's why we're here. Now, the, the original proposal was this, to hear and decide appeals when it is alleged that there is an error in an order, to interpret those regulations at the request of a zoning slash code enforcement official, and three, to grant a variance, variance, to receive and consider appeals for granting of variances from the terms of this ordinance, and to grant such variances that will not be contrary to the public interest, where owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement provisions of the ordinance will cause significant hardship. That's what this board is supposed to do.
All right.
There's nothing wrong with that, that, that's all we're trying to do. Then, if they are supposed to consider the-
I don't think, I'm not sure about this, but I don't think anybody's arguing with it.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm trying to clarify what originally was proposed versus what's before you. So, because the couple things before you-
What's the difference before us? Okay, what's the difference there?
One of the things that is there is that they've inserted a role of the engineer. Some of the engineers are concerned that all of a sudden, they're gonna get hammered by their clients because they know that they, they want to open and then get 90 days. And what we're doing is making the engineers do the punch list, and in this ordinance is, the engineer has to sign off on his letter that says everything is substantially complete before that punch list can, can go. There's another item in here where you have to meet all the criteria, and in the original order that, that we were trying to get, there was only, you only had to meet one of the criteria. So, all I'm telling you, and I'm not, I don't wanna go word for word through this ordinance.
I, I didn't read that. I, I guess there's a matter of interpretation here. We-
I was talking about two different things myself.
Real quick, staff, Bob, you or Stan, would you all address the two issues and explain to us that? I mean, that's, we didn't, I don't, don't remember anything like that.
We have, the, the requirement in here is-
I know how the engineer, I'm sorry, the engineers have to sign off.
The, the project engineer has to certify that the project is substantially complete. The landscape contractor has to certify that the landscaping meets the requirement. That, that's the certification that we have now. So, if there are CO problems with the existing CO process, they're already happening after the project engineer or project architect certifies them, the landscape contractor certifies them. And I think that that, that is a huge benchmark for a couple of reasons. One is, it means that probably any problems are minor.
Right.
And second of all, I don't think you want staff to get out ahead of the design professional that is actually responsible and liable for the-
I would tend to think that's probably not unreasonable.
For the project. So, again, if it's problems that are happening now, they're already happening after the certification. So, and I, and I think that keeps, you know, getting an inspection request before the project's half-complete, and, and then, then we are talking about wasted staff.
Charlie, I mean, a, a, a certificate of substantial completion, it, it's an AIA form, and it has a meaning, and it is a high standard, but it is not, it's not perfection, it's substantial completion. It usually has to do with, release my retainage, you know, that type of thing is really what it's about, but it is not the same as, you know, we meet every possible, every single code, and there's not a tree that's not two feet short. And, and what, I think you're, we're talking about two different things here, because my understanding what's in front of this board tonight can be, is, is kind of a summary of, are we going to give these guys, or Joe Baird, whatever?
Somebody the authority.
Somebody the authority to say, although you do not, right now, they do not have the authority to say, you do not, you know, you don't meet the letter of the law, not every T, not every I, and, and guys, my hands are tied. I can't give you a CO. This guy does not have that power.
Right.
Okay? I think, I think as a practical matter, since he's the knowledgeable person, and, you know, he's not three levels up in government, and I don't want to go three levels up if I'm a developer, he's the guy I should talk to. That's just my opinion, you have a different opinion. So, I, so I think this, all we're talking about tonight is, are we going to give these gentlemen, or some gentlemen, the authority to use their good judgment to allow a reasonable thing to occur? And what will be the terms of the game that are reasonable, and the timing that is reasonable, and appeal process that is reasonable, within a reasonable period of time? Now, I understand you want to get into a different thing about LDRs and bending LDRs, and that's a discussion we should have. I'm, I, I just, I agree with you, but I think that's step two, isn't it? I mean, right now-
Yes, sir.
You've got something in front of you that you can have, I think, that we're all kind of reaching agreement on.
We're trying to figure out what you don't want about what's here.
Let's, let's, let's do step two at the right time, but let's, let's talk about this, because this is a reasonable proposal.
I agree with you.
And we're all talking on the same side of the fence here. I don't, I don't-
Yes, sir. I, I'm, I'm sorry. Again, I'm, I'm just a very poor messenger, but for instance, at the Public Professional Services Committee, I recommend that they pass that as well. But at the same time, I want you to know that what, and I would like to see you pass this.
Well, I, okay, well, let's, let's pass this part of it, and let's talk about the rest of it later.
I want you to know that it's, that it's coming, and that what you've got before you is not what, exactly what the commission wanted, but it's, it's step one.
But is this an important first step? I mean, in my feeling, giving these guys the authority, whoever it's going to be, and we can have an opinion about that, and other people are gonna have an opinion about that, the authority to make a, in their reasonable judgment, a decision on-site, at the time, within 24 hours, appeal within whatever is legally possible, I mean, you don't have a problem with that, do you, Charlie?
I absolutely do not have a problem.
That's an improvement, isn't it?
It is, it is step one.
Okay, step one. Let's do step one. Okay, okay, Sam, hang, hang on. Deep breath time here.
Charlie, have you seen the additional consideration in our working documents here?
I, I, I have so many documents from, I, I'm, I would, I think so, but-
I kinda think part of what you're talking about is in that section.
This is about making it permanent.
Yeah, the, the, the main role was not, was the ability to make it permanent, and the, and the, and the direction that Professional Services wanted to have, of being able to review a staff recommendation, because, and the original that was, that was sent to you would not allow that. And that was one of the key parts of the, of the, of the program.
Okay. But, okay, I think that, but that's, that's enough, that is something down, assuming that you would, what you're talking about was if the core Board of Variances sees the same issue arise enough times, that they will, you want them, or someone wants them to raise the issue about the LDRs, is that what you're talking about?
That, and, and they can communicate with the commission. So, part of what Will Collins' problem was, is that we have to put in certain, and we're, that's, we're, we're still working on those, is that we have to put in certain criteria, and that is, let's say, they are substantially completed, or there is an alternative way of doing it, which is in the building codes, that-
Since that's incomplete, and, and it's not in what we're dealing with tonight, then we really probably need to deal with it later.
But I don't want to adopt something that precludes what's getting ready to come.
I don't think it precludes anything. I mean, I think this is, for good news, bad news is, is since we're appointed, we're, we're telling our bosses up there in the commission what our opinion is of, of what this rule is, and they can still take it. We're not locking in anything. This doesn't lock anything in, but I can tell, if it locks something, then would you tell us where it locks it?
The permanent.
And, and we'll deal with that. But our opinion is, this is not locked, nothing in here is locked in stone.
Yes, sir. When y'all first started talking about this, though, about 20 minutes ago, you were talking to Bob Keating, you didn't understand why the board was going to that, that Board of Variants, and what that was constituted, and you didn't understand why it was Joe Baird, and I was trying to explain that to you.
What we said was, why the Board of Variants and not another board, because we're, we're, you know, we're, from a practical standpoint, we see a lot of the rounded issues on rules, and so, we're not, the Board of Variants having not met, we, we're thinking, well, I understand it's, it's for variances and it's there, but it was a simple comment, why, why not another board, we thought would be able to deal with an issue even better, but it's not, nobody's against the board part, okay?
Okay, that, I, I would like to have seen that explained to you folks, but I'm, I have no vested interest in this. I, I simply am trying to do this because it's part of the entire economic development plan. It's just like we had with, with, the other part was lowering the utility, the impact fees, and the tax abatement program, and the jobs credit program. This is one of five steps that, that we were trying to work on, and I know that you probably know that we lost in the last couple of days a 200-piece manufacturing plant because of impact fees. So, with, with 200 employees. So, that's, the reason I'm thinking about it-
We really are dealing with one item tonight. We can't fix the world tonight, but we can, we can deal with this, and I think that-
We need to constitute this board.
As Sam said, let's, as, good, good, good news, bad news is, has to do with the level of support as this exists right here, so.
Would you like me to shut up and sit down?
No, sir, I am honored that you came to see us, and I appreciate, I appreciate your input. I mean, I, this is, look, this thing, with economics and business, there's a lot of passion, pro-con, you know, that is here, and we, no one at this level up here, me especially, dislikes passion because we like the interest and whatnot. But there is a point when, when redundancy may weigh, weigh on some of our spirits, but on the other hand, if you've got anything else to add, great, if not, we may have someone else in the public that would like to say, and we tried to give you all the time we could.
Well, I'm trying to represent, I'm my own staff, you know, I'm, I'm trying, I've been sent here, not for me, but I've been sent here to try to explain this. Where we really get the problem is, is when I get the difference between explaining the need and the plan.
Right.
We are all in agreement, or most of us are in agreement, that there is a definite need.
I think there's a bigger plan than there is this.
You know, if we can agree on the need, and what we're working on is the plan, and that's where it gets detailed, and that's where I get confused, because I've been through hundreds of hours of going through this, so I, I, I may be jumping around, but, but if we can get together on the need, that we need to have a Board of Appeals, we need to have a way of getting a CO issued, even if it's temporarily, if this is all I can get, we'll do it, and I'll bring something else to you to go to do the next couple of steps.
Temporary means just that. It could go either way. It can be improved upon, it can go away, but temporary at least gets you started, and hopefully it can be handled in, in a better way.
The business community needs this.
Okay. Thanks, Charlie.
Mr. Chairman, let, let me just make one correction. Mr. Wilson said staff didn't support this. Staff does support this. We put it in writing, that we wrote.
Right, I mean, he does.
And we think Mr. Zimmerman's recommendations make it even better.
Okay, good. Mr. Paladin, would you please give your name and address?
Yes, sir, I will. Good evening. I'm Joseph Paladin, I'm the president.
They put Charlie. Excuse me. Okay, go ahead.
I'm the president of Land Coast Construction and Development. I'm also the president of Black Swan Consulting. Several times over the last five years, I've come before you speaking as the chairman of the Growth Awareness Committee, which is some of the things that I'm gonna relate to in, in this particular subject. I mean, with the thing, with the economy being like it is, and some of the things being so negative right now, a lot of this stuff sounds all warm and fuzzy, and like we're really trying to do something good. I mean, years ago, we talked about this, six, seven, eight years ago, when things were going better. Everything's a pendulum. You know, if things are going real great, the pendulum goes out here, we try and slow it down. Things are going real bad right now, we gotta make sure that pendulum don't go all the way out here and cancel everything we tried to do years ago. And so, I agree with Dr. Cox, you can't legislate common sense. I think we can recognize common sense when we see it sometimes, but we really can't dictate it or make laws to enforce it. I think that this could be a possibility of making bad policy. I think that we've done a lot of things over the years to set a standard that's very high for our county. We spent hours rewriting LDRs and passing new policy changes to make sure our subdivisions and our developments here were a step above. The landscaping committee spent four years working on 926. The Growth Awareness Committee's spent almost a half a year working with them. We all thought that was very important to this community, and you all did too, because you helped us pass it. I think we need to be careful not to open this crack in the door to where maybe it can be taken advantage of. I heard Mr. Zimmerman speak, I agree with him 100%. I don't think he'd ever try and take advantage of anything with his reputation, but there are people that would try and take advantage of that opening. I think we gotta be very careful about what we try and undo. Number one, I really don't see a problem. I don't think that we have a problem with staff. I don't think we really have a problem with our CO system and our CC. I've CC'd many subdivisions here. Not perfect, I've got upset several times when I couldn't get the CC the day I wanted it. But that's really our last chance to have the leverage to get what we need. Once we give up that leverage with a developer, if he is not reputable, if he doesn't want to do it, then we have to go for fines, and we put the county in a position of legal battles or legal assistance, which we don't want to do. I think that all of this, if so minor, and which just says only minor things, I think we can correct the minor things before we can figure out who we're gonna appeal it to. I mean, we've had cracks in concrete, we've had trees that didn't meet the criteria, various things. If it's that minor, we can, us and our subs, we can correct that stuff in a matter of a few days, normally. So, by the time we find out who we're gonna appeal to, if Mr. Keating, or if Mr. Bowling, or whoever happens to have that authority, at that time, if you give somebody that authority, I don't think we need an appeals board. I mean, I just think it's a waste of time if it's that minor. If it's major, then I can't see an appeals board after we've gone before the inspections, gone before staff, even gone before Mr. Baird, our county administrator, and then have a board say that after they turn us down, that they're gonna say it's okay to go forward, it's still minor. If they don't think it's minor, I don't think any board should have the right to overrule that and say it's minor. So, I think everything's pretty much okay the way it is, except maybe if we just maybe improve, maybe the attitude to try and expedite this, you know, because we need help right now, everybody needs help. So, I think that positive attitude of staff and all working with us, we get a lot more done than to go into an appeal board. So, that's what my suggestion would be.
Joe, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Some of what, it's, you're speaking from a residential standpoint.
Yes, sir.
You know, this, this is broader than residential, because there could have implications in the commercial side.
Mm-huh.
Maybe more so than residential, I'm not sure. Would you feel the same way with a, a larger building going in place, getting ready to have an opening somewhere, or, I[1726.86] have an opening somewhere, or, I mean, that, I mean, I think that that's the, there are circumstances we can't even dream of now, and there's been, this is, we've addressed through the years, but I'm just wondering.
Well, I see your point, because I remember we went through that with Home Depot at one time, or something like that. I do see your point. But on the other hand, talking about a larger buildings, like Target or Home Depot or something like that, you know, part of this is, well, one of your hammers can be where you don't issue any more permits until the CC's complete and everything's okay. The negative part of what you said, if you have one building, one site plan, when you CC it, you're done. You don't have any other building for me to issue. All you can do is levy fines and go back and try and, and work it out. So that's a, that's a very good question, and the positive side of it is just what you brought forward. Yes, I do see a problem there, but I do see a negative there, because you don't have that leverage anymore. So that would be the negative side of that.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm very much in favor of the rules and regulations and policies that we've put in place over the years. I think we've really worked hard to set a standard high, and I think we've got to be very careful not to relax those standards and let some things get underneath the tent, as has been said earlier, that could put us back the other way with that pendulum. Thank you very much, George.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else in the public care to speak to this issue? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, we've got a proposition in front of us. I think that, that you've got two, you know, two different points of view from the public, as well as their staffs, and we need to come up with something, if we have anything at all, for the commissioners.
I think, George, that, in the commission, that in these times, and a lot of what you've said, I appreciate, Mr. Palladon, Joe, because we have worked hard in this community to set the standards higher. It's why people want to live in Vero Beach instead of down and up the road. But I think that in these times, you have a small businessman, and he wants to get out there and get on the road and get something going, hire people. 90 days could mean quite a bit of difference if you're talking about nothing more than the minutia that we are, or have been talking about in getting that CO. So I, I'm very much in favor of this, in that you want to hire six or seven people, you've got a crack in the sidewalk, or you don't have the proper sized trees, and you can't hire those people and get them going for the length of time it's going to take you to, to, to get that done. It allows you to get going and then go ahead, and we, we're depending on the goodness that Sam's been talking about in the development community, that they will meet their conditions in 90 days, which then everybody is, is satisfied, because we've got what we want for Indian River County, but that businessman has the allowance to get going as quickly as they possibly can.
Anyone else?
I feel a lot more comfortable with proposition that Mr. Zimmerman has, has put forward than I do the, the mechanism that's outlined here, which seems to me cumbersome. And, and I, and I'm, and I'm a little concerned that it, it's got conflicting lines of authority and confusion, and, and staff even having to say that, you know, that they're going, they may, may be coming back and revisiting this suspension provision because they may have to get rid of it. And, you know, I think that a, a more simple-minded and direct approach could actually be more workable and, and a lot faster. And there's just something that gets me about thinking about our highest-paid county employee dealing with punch list items. This just does not compute.
He volunteered, remember. That's, that's a big thing in the county now. He who steps forward usually gets the job, so.
I mean, as a taxpayer, I've got to wonder how my tax dollars are being spent on his salary if he's dealing with cracked curves. I mean, something doesn't work from there.
All right. Anyone else, any other thoughts?
Not that Bob should have to deal with cracked curves, but I think that's his job description.
I think that the county commissioners decided that they want a common sense approach to a problem, so let's provide them with a common sense recommendation. Mr. Zimmerman, I would love to see you make a motion.
Here's what, here's what, in a nutshell, I think is, and I like Sam's proposal, but I, there's a, there's a pro and con here in this whole thing, and this is what's something. The pro to me is that it is temporary, so we get to try it out, and we can change it. I like the idea of what Zim, Sam's talking about. You put some criteria, timeframes, workable, that have to be hit, that, that are reasonable. The downside is, is I really believe, whether it's Bob, or Joe, or John Doe, whoever they come into, for a long, for a while, I think you're going to have an appeal that's going to go, not have the, not the variance board, but I think they're going to be granted 90 days, and the CO is going to move from day one till day 89, and you just shifted the problem, just giving them 90 days more to, to, to hit the punch list, they get some people in, and maybe it'll happen, and I think they will. And if that helps the economy and helps people, it's fine by me, because in 90 days, we're supposed to have what we should have had day one.
Right.
But I think that's, if I'm one of those guys, they come in and complain, I go, yep, you're out, 90 days, 90 days, 90 days. And I think that'll happen, from a reasonable standpoint, so. Anyway, anybody else, and if not, we, we are at the point where we do need a motion.
Are, are we going to do a motion, I mean, along the lines of what Sam?
We're going to do any motion that someone makes a motion and gets a second, and votes on it, does. We can do.
Your motion is better than you said before.
My, my motion is to redraft the proposed ordinance, to have the following conditions, that the community development coordinator will be substituted for the county administrator as being the person who has the authority to issue or not issue a temporary CO. Number two, that that decision should be made to grant or not grant within one, you know, one or two business days by the community development coordinator. Number three, if, if he rejects it, that the applicant can appeal to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Number four, that the Board of Zoning Adjustment must meet within 10 business days, or whatever is reasonable and rational and as quick as possible to decide the issue. And number five, I would, actually, number five I'll, I'll take as a separate motion, so that is.
That's fine.
I have a second.
What, you're not asking for, be sent back for a redraft to come to us? What you're doing is, is making a motion to accept the proposal as written, but with the following changes.
Thank you for that clarification, that is correct.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second, yes.
Okay, PR has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay.
I have a second motion.
Go ahead.
One, is I'm still concerned about the problem with the CC, where the victim, you know, the innocent person, who's the person moving into the house, is the victim of the crime of someone else for something that's a, you know, that's a minutia. And so, I do want to include the CC in this proposed ordinance, but I would ask staff to formulate some kind of solution to this problem, because that's not a result we want.
Okay, what I was, I'm just thinking, we have just, we just, for better for worse, as written, sent the CC with the CO. Okay. But, so what I think, if you want a second motion, or second item, you might want to request that, by motion, you request that the county commission asks the staff to look specifically at the CC issue in, in light of the fact that they may be punishing the person, so that they could, and they'll know ahead of time that they break it out. We, I guess we need that in form of a motion. Or should that, I'm, I'm looking at Bob or George, I mean, do we need to throw that in? Because he did move it, you know, and we can go back and readdress it, but he moved it forward, which I think was good.
No, I agree. And actually, as I've been listening, I've been thinking of more and more problems with the CC process. I mean, say there is a deficiency, and you don't want to hold up the homeowner, and you say you have 90 days to fix it, developer, at 90 days he doesn't fix it, you go to co-enforcement board, where are they going to lean? Are they going to lean the common property? Are they going to lean, and then what do you foreclose on? I mean, do you, you know, go to the homeowners and say, you're going to lose your pool because we have to foreclose on something, because we have to lean something?
Yeah, that doesn't work.
There's, there's, I, I think it's a good idea to recommend that staff look at the CC process and make sure that we don't punish.
That might be the way to do it, it's just, because we could do that from our standpoint, is just, is just regardless, and, and this could be passed in the comments to the commission, because you're going to end up with comments that are different now. You're going to have to make your proposal, PSC proposal, as well as our proposal, correct?
Yeah, maybe what you want to do is, is just have bonding associated with the CC.
I, I love that idea.
Yeah.
With the CC, it should be a bond, you know, that's a reasonable amount to cover, plus the administrative costs, should you have to take over and finish the work yourself, God forbid.
If, in order, we're not looking.
We're doing a lot of that.
We're not looking, we're not looking to stump, stump, or create another problem or slow the process down, but the other thought would be, is that if you want, if we, as a further recommendation, we recommend this to the Board of County Commissioners to go along with our last motion, that's fine too. And that may be the way to go.
I would like to make one observation, though, from the county attorney's office standpoint. We do a lot with bonds, and it's a very cumbersome process. So I would, I've been told specifically, avoid the bonding. I mean, if anything, the commissioners are pulling back on bonding requirements, not extending them further.
Okay, well, that's, that's, I would suggest, because we, you want to go on record that we have a problem with it, and I think that we've all understand what you brought up, is that we simply ask the staff that, although we just passed the following motion, which we're going to the commission, that they include the following comment, that we believe that the CC system needs to be looked at in detail and potentially redrafted because of the problems with which you just described, and we can make that in the form of a motion to go with the first motion, if that's all right.
That would be my motion, because I don't have the solution. I just want to bring up the concern, so that's, that's my motion.
Rita, can you draft that where it's coherent?
[laughing]
But he said that he thought he meant, yeah. Okay, then I think that's fair, and if, if that's in the form of a motion, if I got a second.
Second, second.
A second with David.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one quick thing?
Okay.
Not necessarily that I agree with the previous motion, but can we at least amend it to say the community development director or his designee, because if you're only given 24 hours and pops out of the state, then you really need to be able to expand that authority to someone else.
I don't want to get down, I don't want to get down in the weeds of it, I, you know, no.
I'd like to say for technical purposes, because we've gotten situations before where we didn't have language in there.
Sure, sure, yes.
Put our designee in there.
Is that a friendly amendment?
I'm not sure. Do we have to take a vote on that amendment?
You do, you have to reopen the amendment, which is, I think the process is, does the second, does the motioner agree, and does the seconder agree to allow the amendment?
I agree.
And the seconder agrees, okay. Under discussion, do you want, and I will say this, do you want the designee, his designee, or do you want to make it then, Joe? As a, I don't, and I know this is getting you, this is not a detail, I can see them getting into it, but I don't want to.
His designee.
Okay, his designee is fine. All right, all those in favor of the amended motion that we had earlier, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, like sign. Okay, that's done.
Bob, do you want that job? I was sort of asking that first.
We make a motion regarding.
We got, we have a, we have a motion open, oh, we jumped to it, we have a motion open right now that still needs to be voted on. The motion is that we send them, we ask the staff to relook at the CC rules and regs, and send a note to the commission with our last motion, that we believe that's the one area that may be deficient in, in the current rule. And that's, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, like sign. That also carries, okay. Thank you. Moving right along, we, next item is under commission matters. I have one thing, you've got to explain this to me again, because I know it's coming, and Bob, you can do it or stand. We have currently have had a workshop on sand mining, and I'm, I'm still, I'm not sure I'm clear on all the rules. Sand mining has been at the Technical Review Committee this week, the, one of the sand mines. It will move from Technical Review Committee, it moves to the PSC, or does it come directly to us?
It, it comes directly to you, but there'll be another TRC meeting, so.
Okay, and public input is allowed there?
We, we do allow limited public input at Technical Review Committee meetings, but we, we try to limit it to technical items, that's not the form to discuss.
I, I understand, but I mean, procedurally, then, it does, it doesn't go to another committee, it comes to us directly from there?
That's correct.
We, we had recommended a, a different procedure than ended up. When it gets to us, it's going to be an administrative permit approval, which will be deal.
With, with special notice, and conducted like a public hearing.
But I was going to say, were, did, did that part come out of the commission about being adopted? I thought that it just, I wasn't sure if it had to be a public meeting or not.
You, you have to conduct it like a public hearing, and there will be notice.
There will be notice, there'll be a public hearing, even though it's administrative permit, special, it's a special type exception for this type issue.
I wouldn't use those two words together. I'd say it's a, it's a special requirement.
But, and we should, the guidelines and criteria will be technical. Is that correct? There'll be technical items, and we're not broadening it into the next level, which I just did.
No, it, it is a quasi-judicial hearing, so we still, but will be applying the rules, and that's the basis of the decision.
Right, okay. And then, will there be an appeal to the commission? What is, if there could be an appeal?
Yes.
With a fee by either side, the ultimate say-so would end up in the commission, if there's an appeal, it doesn't stop here.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the Board of County Commissioners does not have a designee. It's the board.
Right.
Now, when is that meeting scheduled? Do you have it scheduled?
The Technical Review Committee meeting was this last Wednesday, yesterday?
You said there was another one, though.
Well, there, the, the committee voted that there will have to be a second TRC meeting to review however they respond, so there will be at least one more Technical Review Committee meeting at some point in the future, it's not scheduled. When they address the comments at the TRC, and they come back in with revised plans, we won't just, you know, sign off on it and, and bring it to you all. There'll actually be a second Technical Review Committee meeting.
Okay, and you will let us know when that is, then?
Okay.
Thank you.
The last item is, I'm sorry, I've run a poor meeting tonight, we've been here two hours and 45 minutes, and we're going to have to take at least a five-minute break. So before we go on to Chris, sorry, Chris.
That's for last?
We're back, we're back at it here, we get to, next on the agenda is planning matters, we have honored guests tonight, along with anything else, Dan.
I yield my time to the gentleman to my left.
This is, the long-awaited turn lane discussion with Chris Mora, who's patiently waited for our abuse as which to be yielded and come soon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Chris Mora, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director for the county. The good news is I've got a fairly short presentation, and the even better news is I was back in my office and I took about seven or eight slides out of it, so it's even shorter than that. So, I'll try and be brief and do it in summary fashion. This is a presentation on turn lanes, and it's my understanding that at a planning and zoning commission meeting back in February, during the site plan consideration for a development called the Preserve at Oak Lake, that this issue came up with regard to that particular site plan. This is a, an aerial view of where Preserve at Oak Lake would be, it's on the east side of Indian River Boulevard, just north of the hospital area, just north of Thirty-Seventh Street. If I overlay the site plan layout, seven-and-a-half acre site, forty-two multifamily units, and the circulation plan for traffic on this particular site was a right-in, proposed was a right-in, right-out driveway, one single right-in, right-out driveway on Indian River Boulevard that wound through the development and ended up on the north side at a T-turnaround area. If you look at the peak hour traffic associated with this site, there were twenty right turns entering in during the afternoon peak hour, and ten right turns egressing the site during that same afternoon peak hour. Now, if, and there were no turn lanes proposed, because they didn't meet the criteria, the thresholds in our LDRs. Now, if turn lanes had been considered for this development, a left turn lane from the north and a right turn lane from the south, volumes, if we applied those trip distribution model that was run for this site, it would have been three lefts coming in from the north, they would have come from the twenty, which would have reduced the right turns from the south to seventeen, so those would have been the volumes that we would have been looking at had we been considering turn lanes. If you look at the three, that fell below the threshold of twenty, which is in our LDRs for left. The seventeen fell below the threshold of seventy-five, which is the threshold of requiring a right turn lane from the south. So, staff, traffic engineering staff looked at this, and they determined that, hey, there's not enough traffic, you don't need to put in turn lanes, applying the code as it exists today. I'll give you a real brief history of our turn lane requirements from nineteen ninety, early nineties when our code was first established, up until two thousand and four, the right and left turn lane requirements were laid in, laid out in chapter nine fifty-two, the traffic chapter of the code. They basically said that up until two thousand and four now, left turns are required when you meet thirty lefts an hour, left turn lanes are required when you meet thirty lefts an hour. Right turn lanes are required when you meet seventy-five rights or more per hour, or that threshold would be, would be reduced to forty if it's a high-speed, high-volume road. The reason the seventy-five was applied to Indian River Boulevard is there's a third item, high-speed, high-volume, but also it's gotta be a high-volume driveway, it's gotta be at least a thousand ADT per, daily traffic driveway, a thousand vehicles per day in order to qualify for that forty. This development did not meet that, it was a low-volume driveway, only forty-two multifamily units doesn't generate a thousand trips a day. So, although Indian River Boulevard is high-volume and high-speed, it didn't meet that third cog, which is the thousand trips per day for the driveway. Otherwise, we would apply the forty, but again, it still wouldn't have met because it was too low. After two thousand and four, those were the requirements up to two thousand and four. Now, in two thousand and four, the county contracted with a consultant to look at the left turn requirements, the thinking was, they're not strict enough. Consultant was asked to determine if the county's left turn lane requirements should be changed, he was asked to look at several factors, look at the turning vines, should we only have a thirty threshold? Should daily traffic vines be taken into consideration, should higher-volume roads require a lower threshold for turn lanes? Look at opposing traffic, since opposing traffic is really what creates the gaps for a left turn, maybe that should be looked at. And lastly, look at, look at other counties, look at what DOT requires for turn lanes. One key objective we asked him to look at was to consider if the daily traffic, the ADT, annual average daily traffic, the daily number of vehicles is considered as an independent variable, what's the number of left turns that would warrant a left turn lane? Well, he did that and came up with the staggered threshold of left turns requiring a turn lane. If the annual average daily traffic's less than a thousand, it's thirty-five, and on down the line, so if you get more than ten thousand, higher-volume road, you only need twenty lefts to require a left turn lane. So, it made sense from a practical standpoint, more opposing traffic, lower threshold to require the turn lane. And since two thousand and four, we've been applying this, these thresholds for left turn lanes. Oak Lake again was only three, fell below the twenty, wasn't required. In two thousand and six, you probably all remember the McMahon study, McMahon report, consultant was asked to look at various parts of the traffic code and see if it should be changed. Now, the main areas were traffic impact studies and concurrency, however, that last one, access control, was also part of it. He was asked specifically to look at turn lanes, review the turn lanes, structure of those LDRs in the county, are they appropriate? In two thousand and six, McMahon brought the report back to the board, his findings as far as turn lanes were concerned was, when Indian River County's turn lane requirements are compared to the five sample sites, he looked at five other counties, he found that our turn lane standards were very conservative, extremely conservative, most conservative he'd seen, he said. He recommended that the existing turn lane standards remain in place, however, staff should have the ability to review them on a case-by-case basis. Basically, he said the county should be able to review them on a case-by-case basis. Now, staff didn't agree with that, staff, staff agreed that the turn lane standards were okay, but we didn't want to look at it, we didn't want the board to consider, or P&amp;Z to consider them on a case-by-case basis, we didn't want subjective standards. So, we took that to the board, the board agreed, however, they said staff can have the ability to require a turn lane if it's gonna address a specific safety issue, that's what was passed. And then in July of two thousand and seven, Planning and Zoning also requested another update on turn lanes, I did pretty much the same presentation that I'm doing now, but...
Why aren't you listening to us?
I'm sorry, I couldn't help it. I'm sorry.
We have a new enforcer up here now, buddy.
We had similar discussions, we didn't make any changes, but staff was again urged to remain flexible on the turn lane issue. I'm not rubbing this in, I'm just giving you this. As far as turn lane costs are concerned, there's a wide range, anywhere from fifteen thousand dollars up to five hundred thousand dollars plus. Why is there such a wide range? Well, there's a lot of factors. What's the length of the turn lane, what's the storage, taper, transition, is it rural or urban design? Is it, is the widening for a left turn lane, say, centered on the roadway, is it all on one side? If it's all on one side, the transition's longer, so it all, it all figures into the design. What's the clear zone? Clear zone is the recovery area along the side of the road, if you need a large clear zone, that can affect the turn lane design. Are there utilities to be relocated, is there poles along the side, you have to move those all out of the way, are they transmission poles versus distribution, a lot of utilities can be in the way. What kind of drainage system, is it curb and gutter, closed drainage system, is it open swales? That can add to the cost. Do we have right-of-way? Can we even fit a turn lane into the existing right-of-way? That's a big issue. If you look at the area where Oak Lake Preserve was, and this is the right, the north side or the east side of the Boulevard in that area where Oak Lake Preserve was proposed, this would be about the location of the driveway, this would be where the right turn lane would be put in, and about what it would be, the length and what it would look like, if you look at how much closer the edge of that pavement will be to that existing pole, that's a problem. It's not an unsolvable problem, but it's a problem because that pole, when the edge of pavement was back here, met clear zone, now it doesn't, now it's gotta be moved. Well, the turn lane probably costs you ten, fifteen thousand dollars in asphalt and base and rock and subgrade. Moving that pole, since that's a sixty-foot reinforced concrete, thirteen thousand eight-hundred bolt line, you can't just move one of those, you've either gotta move three, or five, or seven in order to keep the alignment proper for the, for the transformers and the electric lines, so that's where the costs come in. Case by case, they can run up to, you know, five, ten thousand dollars a pole, depending on how many poles, you could be up in the hundred thousand dollar range very quickly for a turn lane. So, it may seem simple, it may seem like it's the right thing to do, but when you add all the costs, it can be difficult. So, to summarize, basically, our turn lane requirements have been in place since the early nineties. Our standards were reviewed and changed in two thousand and four based on, just the left turn lane standards were reviewed and changed based on the consultant report. The right and left turn lane standards were reviewed again in oh-six by McMahon, as he did his overall traffic code review. The turn lane standards brought back in oh-seven, discussed in front of P&amp;Z unchanged at that time. Again, the turn lane costs are very widely, depending on the road design, urban versus rural, other factors. Staff reviewed and determined that the Preserve at Oak Lake did not require turn lanes on the Boulevard. Where do we go from here?
Go back to your fir, the slide at Oak Lake.
Back for next year?
Please. We're gonna try and hit this quick, 'cause I mean, I understand where, where you were, no, the turn lane with the pole, the, the last aerial where you were talking about the distances and the pole.
The reason, the reason is that, well, I don't think, I think that you've touched on all the practical points of the rule, et cetera, I think the only question that keeps coming up, at least in my mind, and I'm one who questions this a lot, is that anytime you're coming off of a high-speed road, even, and this is the dilemma, is the car you have, even if the left turn lane stopped where that car is, the car would have be decelerating, 'cause he knows he's gotta turn left, it would seem to me to be able to put even a small deceleration lane in, so he could get down to twenty-five and move over and continue to slow down to make the right turn without blocking traffic, is better than having him stop or slow down to a crawl, whatever it's gonna be, at the actual driveway. And if you, if you've ever been in a line of traffic, and remember, that's, that lane is green, a green light, so it's go, that lane doesn't stop at the traffic light, it's full speed coming down that particular lane. Today, we had the right turn lanes on US One going into a shopping center, but even if, even if the traffic is minimal, why, if it is all possible, why not give a relief area for a car to get off the road and get out of the way of traffic without forcing it to go all the way to the turn, even though it's not technically a safe, full turn lane? I mean, and, and the same question would apply, is that when they come out of this place, you're gonna go from a dead stop into full traffic, why not offer them some kind of a small area to begin to accelerate to get out into the traffic, rather than pull straight out and turn right at the same time?
Right.
And that's, I mean, that's been, it's, from my standpoint, I'm thinking, and I'm not good at this, but common sense, I think you're dealing with rules and the laws precisely, and I'm just wondering, is there any chance of doing that? Is it not safe? Does it not make it better if we could?
No, it's always safer to have a turn lane.
Now, understand, I'm talking about a one-third turn lane, not a full turn.
But the problem is, when you build a turn lane, you've gotta follow Green Book standards, gotta follow roadway design standards.
Why?
Because if you don't, no engineer will sign off on it. It's gotta be, it's got, it's got the minimum turn lane I can build.
So, we're gonna accept the fact of a non-safe area up into, or less safe precision, because the Green Book says we can't do it any other way.
Well, the Green, the Green Book addresses certain issues.
I thought the county, I thought we had the right to give up some, I thought we had the right to make some criteria changes if we dealt with them, it's just like trees in a, in a landscape medium, we can, we can do that, even though the Green Book says they want it clear.
Well, what the Green Book tries to do is, it tries to address deceleration, storage for turn lane, the minimum one you can build, two-hundred-and-eighty feet long with fifty-foot taper, that's three-hundred-and-thirty feet, that's the one that you see right here on this aerial.
Right.
Now, if you put in a shorter one, you're not gonna guarantee that someone can decelerate from the prevailing speed out on Indian River Boulevard down. Now, I know what you're saying, you're saying, well, something's better than nothing.
If they're gonna turn right there, they're gonna have to hit the brakes sometime.
And, and that may be, and that may be something that we can address through increased radius on the, on the driveway, something like that, but you're not gonna be able to fit a sta, a acceptable turn lane.
I understand that we're not gonna fit a standard turn lane in, and a standard turn lane may be expensive, the reason, purpose in this was to discuss the possibilities or reality of what would be maybe unstandard, even, and if it's half that length, is that not safer than it is to go straight to the turn?
How much length can you get from an increased radius on a driveway?
You can't.
Well, you can't.
We need to work around something, using common sense.
Yeah, how, how much length would that cut?
What I'm thinking of is, instead of calling it a turn lane, let's say we call it an increased radius.
You're smarter than that.
Put in a, put in a, say, a bus stop with a striped-out area.
Get a hundred and feet.
We can call it a lot of things, it's not a turn lane.
Right.
But it's a paved area, it's a paved area that offers someone shelter if they're coming in out of the travel lane.
Yeah.
It's just that an engineer isn't gonna be able to stripe it and call it a turn lane, that's, that's.
I have a question about...
I mean, I think that, at least that's an answer that I could, my point was to try and get somebody off the road, which does, it's, traffic slows down but keeps flowing without having to come to an almost complete stop.
And I, and I agree with you, that's always safer.
And if your five cars back, that stop becomes a lot more abrupt, if, you know, than, and it's, to me, it was a safety issue more than anything, and on any four-lane road, that was it, so.
With, with, in this case, where the, where that pole was there, and you don't, if you put in the turn lane, you wouldn't have a clear zone, is that right?
That's correct.
And that's a safety issue.
Right.
What about a guardrail? You know, I mean, we put guardrails to keep people from hitting things all over the...
Guardrails, guardrails are often unsafe, just as a...
Well, we're trying, you know, that adds, I mean, I understand, that's an expense, that's another expense, and the county doesn't wanna pay for it, they want to make the developer pay for it.
It'd be less than two-hundred thousand dollars to move the poles, the wire told us on this issue.
Isn't, Chris, in a place like that, that we, you were looking at specifically, you, I understand probably with the Green Belt, that it's an issue with the risk management group, but as George was saying, if you went past that pole, and you had a very short turn lane there, it looks like it might be a hundred-and-fifty feet or a hundred-and-twenty feet, but you've got very few cars that are gonna make that right turn, and this is the issues that we're looking at, because you don't have the turn lane, you have so few cars, you can't do the turn lane, so you're not gonna have very many cars trying to turn right at one time, you don't need that extended.
Right, I, I can't, I can't argue with you, I think that any spacing, a shorter space, I'm just trying to apply good engineering standards to this problem. We've had several consultants look at it, they've told us we're good.
Okay.
So, that's where we are.
I have a, just to, to help me understand this issue better, there's obviously, there's a perception, judging by looking at the calendar, that there's a problem. Is there a problem? Does traffic, you know, statistics show that there is a higher incidence of rear-end, I mean, is there a problem? Or is this just a perceived problem, and it's not really a problem? Because my understanding of traffic and engineering is that it's a pretty, it's a numbers-driven thing, it's a science. We're talking about engineering now, we're not talking about the caliper of trees or something that's subjective, this is a science that people have studied for sixty years, and, you know, there's, you know, computer programs that deal with this and everything else, so, you know, the science is telling us, and the best practice is telling us, that this is not necessary or required. So, now, I'm, I'm asking you, do we, we have a perception that there's a problem, is there data to back up that perception, or are we, or is there no problem here really at all, there's, we're not having accidents related to this?
We have no, the county gets all of the crash data from all the agencies, all law enforcement agencies, whether FHP, Sheriff's Department, City Police, we take all that data.
I'll save you the trouble, it's perception.
So, this is a perception, so we're, so we're talking about adding the costs and the extra blacktop and widening our roads and doing all of these things for a problem that does not exist.
I can't justify it from an accident or crash.
Okay, so it's not an accident or crash thing, and the best practice of, of the science and engineering of traffic does not say it's a necessity.
That's correct.
And the consultants that we've had come in here every couple of years for the last decade have, have told us, we already have the best code on the book of anybody they look at.
That's correct.
Hey, Sam, I'm guilty, the perception starts with me and then probably ends not with me, but I perceive that this can be a problem in the future, and has been, it's just that people are great drivers and whatnot, but I'm, it is perception, I've never denied that.
I just can't help but see that in this particular instance, that because it's probably gonna be mainly senior... gonna be mainly senior citizens, and that you're gonna have people going 45 to 55 miles an hour, and you've got somebody slowing down to 20 to make a turn, or 10 to make a turn.
Sam, I mean, look, there's never been any denying, Chris and I have an understanding, this is perception, I think it looks safer. It doesn't look like a whole lot of money, it looked like, I thought this, any turn lane that's made, or, or lengthening the ra, turn radius helps get moved traffic out of the way without a whole lot of money. Obviously, on the cost variation, it's huge, it's 15 to 500 and, and whatnot, and I just wanted, I just thought, whether it's case by case, that there was a possibility, if we could approach this in a different way, maybe on some of the four-lane roads or higher speed roads, that we could, of, relook at how we do this, it's all, that's the whole purpose. We weren't doing anything tonight, this was just, just a discussion, so...
Could it be considered a requirement of a bus stop? What is the length of a bus stop?
Uh, buses are normally about 60 feet in length, so stop is usually, we usually make them standard 100 feet.
Right. Let me ask you another practical question, go, you had a, a sheet where you talked about the, you know, some of the potential problems with putting in turn lanes or even bus stops, which is a shorter turn lane, okay? We looked at a project tonight where, which was the commercial project on US-1, where the main entrance on US-1 was right up against the property line of an adjoining property owner. How would you deal with, you know, a, a modified or a full turn lane requirement that isn't backed up by the science, engineering, and everything else? I mean, you're taking land from somebody else, right? I mean, how are you gonna deal, what, what if you have two parcels, the parcels immediately to the south of, of that big commercial development was a multifamily parcel, was about 120 feet wide at its front? So, let's say you have two of those together, and these guys are developing it separately, and we put this, this thing on this one guy, how, you know, is, he's, there's gonna be a turn lane on someone else's property, or there's gonna be one long continuous turn lane, which frankly is more dangerous because you've got, you know, people coming in and out and, you know, you know what I'm saying? Am I being clear about my question?
We do, we do run into this from time to time if they're both commercial property owners, if they're both developing, developing...
But this is not, this was a commercial, a multifamily.
Just remember, his, that property, that property, the property to the south's owner is now locked to the driveway that's just gone in, he's not gonna get another driveway, he has to go through that driveway.
I, I, I guess I was just trying to use that as an example, so you had a 120-foot strip here, you had 220-foot strips, separate property owners, you know, owner support...
If it's to the advantage of the adjacent property owner to have that turn lane in because he's gotta access it eventually and ever connect to that driveway, then, then he's probably gonna agree with it.
But if it's the requirement of one and it puts a burden on another, correct?
If he's resistant...
Then you got a problem with...
And you got a problem because you've got to show a, a judge, it's, there's a, there's a thing called a necessity, you gotta show...
So, we're, we're, we're adding another thing on to the list of potential problems with expanding, right? That would be another one, which is that we're gonna have, you know, property, adjoining property owners...
Well, that's why I put that right-of-way bullet in there, because that, that can be a, a real sticky issue with turn lanes.
On any situation.
Right.
Right, okay. All right, anybody else? I think, Chris, listen, thank you very much for coming back again. You know, one thing about, I've been consistent, so, uh, hang on to your PowerPoint, just get ready to change the name of the project, and, and if you can, the one thing I would ask, and I would hope that you would consider, is that if there's a way to come up with something, not crossing property rights, it's simple, that anytime we can add radius on these higher-speed roads, I think it makes sense. Doesn't, I, it probably is never gonna make, the numbers may not fit, but if we can do it and get somebody to do it, I would like to see it, I just feel like it's a good idea, so, if we can. If not, you're gonna have to hear it when it comes here anyway, so, maybe I'm gonna be gone, so, maybe you'll outlive me, I think you will. All right.
I say, we got it on two projects already, we did in the past, there's one...
And you did tonight?
No, the, the daycare on the west side of 58th Avenue, north of 26th Street, had an increased radius, it didn't meet the turn lane requirements, but you can take a look at one out in the field, at this thing.
Okay, um, anything else from your attorneys matters?
No.
Thank you all for your patience, we're adjourned.